And I would play their PSA right after the school committee meeting. After that.
Perfect, thank you. We worked long and hard on that.
Welcome to the, welcome to the East Bridgewater School Committee Meeting of May 9, 2019. At this time, I would take a motion to open the meeting.
Show move.
Move by Gordon, second.
Second.
By Trista, all in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The what? Which paper? Oh wow, sorry. I have it right here. Right there.
So, we have the first, first section up is public comment and we have listed on our agenda, the public comment period is not an open public forum. Speakers may address topics on the agenda. Items specified for public comment are items within the scope of the school committee's responsibility. Per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, governs public participation at open committee meetings. The open meeting law provides, no person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. And one other thing to note, all individuals who wish to speak during the public comment period must identify themselves by name. Speakers must address the full committee through the chair and may not address individual members of the committee. The public comment period, once again, is not an open public forum and speakers may address topics on the agenda. Items specified for public comment are items within the scope of the school committee's responsibility. Is anyone here for public comment? No? Superintendent, would you like to introduce the next item on the agenda?
Of course I would be. Delaney Lyons has been chosen to attend the International Career Development Conference. Delaney is the first East Bridgewater student to attend this competition and qualified based on superior performance at the district and state levels in her business event. Mrs. O'Brien and Delaney attended the ICDC Conference, April 27th through the 30th, 2019, in Orlando, Florida. Both Delaney and Ms. O'Brien are here this evening. And Ms. O'Brien, could you come up and tell us a little bit about the conference? Maybe Delaney, could you come and sit next to Ms. O'Brien, please?
Hello. I just want to give you a brief history of DECA, in case you're not familiar with it. DECA, we started a DECA chapter five years ago here at the high school and DECA is an acronym for Distributive Education Clubs of America. And it was started in the 1940s when marketing education used to be called distributive education. So what they've done is they've kept the acronym. They don't really refer to it anymore as distributive education clubs, but DECA is still in existence. There are about 225,000 students involved in DECA at the high school and collegiate level. And so the chapter we have in East Bridgewater, it's, it's a business kind of club. Students choose a category or an event to study. It's co-curricula, we meet after school. We don't have a classroom that's a, that's a DECA marketing class. So the students meet after school, once a week, usually more often before a competition. And then what they do is they take their event, we go to a district, state, and if you're eligible, an international competition. So in January, our DECA members went to the district competition in Mansfield. Thirteen of them qualified to go to the state competition in March, March of which Delaney was one. The thirteen went to the state competition. It's a three-day, two-night competition in Boston. And then from there, the top five at the state for each of the events in DECA were eligible to attend the ICDC, which is the International Career Development Conference, was held in Orlando, Florida, April 27th to May 1st. Twenty-two thousand students and advisors. It's a huge conference, really, really large. All the DECA members are proud of Delaney, as I am too. You know, she's dedicated her time and effort to get where she did, you know, to qualify for the international competition and it's a huge accomplishment, really is, yeah.
So about DECA, I, this was my first year joining. Because of previous scheduling conflicts, I couldn't join DECA my first two years of high school, but I'm very glad I did it this year. The community in DECA is very strong, even though we're one of the smaller chapters and younger chapters. And definitely, I believe thirteen members making it to states was our largest group heading there. So we're definitely, we have the ball rolling and we're all definitely proud and ready to make our chapter bigger. And now that we had myself go to ICDC, now we're going to do more fundraising in hopes of more students attending ICDC next year. So we'll have more funds, whereas we weren't as prepared. This was kind of, because you don't know, you make it to ICDC until a month before the actual conference. So our club was kind of scrambling a little bit because it's a lot, it's a lot of preparation, a lot of work. And I'm definitely thankful for all my members and all the faculty who helped me out. But we're definitely going into this year, my amazing presidents, Sadie Nakar and Mike Dinozzo, are definitely prepared to get even, hopefully, more students than thirteen at states, which gives us a better opportunity at getting more kids into ICDC. And also we're opening up, we're trying to get more written events. We're just, overall, we're trying to make the club bigger because this was definitely a really, really great experience that I think more students should be involved in, so.
Congratulations, then.
Thank you.
Can you tell us what you did to qualify, what the actual?
So first, you go through districts, which is just like South Shore, towns. The tops, so there's many, many categories. Mine is business service marketing. So you're, the top six in that category move on to states. And then in states, there's about, I'd say like fifty to sixty kids in each category and then top five of those students. So about 10% of each category is let into ICDC. And then in ICDC, I was one of probably like 160 to 200 kids in my category. And then the top three become international winners out of 200. So I met some really, really smart kids. It was, it was intimidating, it was really fun. But what, to compete in this competition is you're given a business proposal, problem, or idea. And I have ten minutes to solve it, come up with something new. I can make a chart or a business card. And I, and then I have ten minutes to present it in front of a judge. And then there's performance indicators on how well I did and that's how they judge me off of. And then before that, we take a hundred-question quiz. And then both your, yeah, or your, yeah, your test and then your role-play scores are combined for your final score.
At the state level and at the international, they, they go through two role-plays. So, I mean, the skills they learn, presentation, communication, public speaking, self-confidence. And I even tell students that it isn't just for business students. These are life skills that will benefit them in whatever career they have.
That's intense. So, Ms. O'Brien, this was your last year with us. Retiring at the end of this year. So we're going to have to find someone, we're going to have to find someone to fill this space to keep this program going. I think that, you know, it shows a lot that you took it from five years ago, started the program, continued to go, and now we've got some kids that are really digging deep. The other day, Delaney had lunch with me with a bunch, with a few other juniors and seniors from the drama club that we like to have lunch with when the kids compete or when the kids do something, we have them come in. Now that you say DECA, maybe we'll have to have some of your, your student, your, your peers come in and have lunch.
I love that.
Probably with Dr. Williams, she's a lot smarter than I, but then you can really have a good conversation. But Delaney, the other day, having the conversation with you, and your dad's here, having the conversation with you the other night, the other day showed me that you are certainly prepared to move on. And even when we had that conversation about, what are you going to do when you go to college? And you're like, you know, I'm not too sure yet. It looks like business, but I'm not too sure, but I'm not sure where I'm going to go. Those are the questions that you should have today. But seeing that, how well-grounded you are and how bright and articulate you have been, you know, since I met you the other day and then today, this is fantastic. And to show off East Bridgewater in the manner that you did in an academic competition shows that we can create, you know, another program and continue to boost our programs, both academically, athletically, musically, and across the board. That everybody has, you know, a silo to be in, or you can be in everything. So I thank you for this because we, this was something that, when, when you ever left and then they brought, Mrs. Pennington and I did the agenda and then Barbara came in and said, I said, "That was Delaney. Why didn't anybody tell me before? Why?" We were sitting with her, we were having lunch. So that's great, I'm really proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She couldn't have done a better job.
It was so right, it doesn't take, it takes a lot. So thank you for all your help and all your work for the kids. It's really, we appreciate it.
Well, it's, it's, it's great, you know, I love doing what I do.
Thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Can we get a quick picture because Delaney's family's here? So can we have the school committee come out in front?
Wait, can we do this?
I want to get in the back.
One, two, three. Can we take another one? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, Delaney. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have Ms. Jennifer Dias and Mr. Benjamin Healy, Grade Eight Social Studies teachers, to request approval from us, the school committee, to attend an out-of-state trip with the Grade Eight students to Washington DC, June 11th through 14th of 2020. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Good with that one.
Huh?
Hello?
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for having us. We are here to request permission for an out-of-state field trip. Next year, the state is moving to the new curriculum. We are lucky enough that we've already been working with civics in the eighth grade, but next year will be the first year of the implementation of the new civic standards for eighth grade. And we would like to request a field trip for the eighth grade to go to Washington DC.
The paperwork says Philly as well, too. Are you stopping in Philly, coming or going?
The plan right now is go down to Washington and then on the return, stop at Philadelphia as well.
Okay, excellent. Do you have any, or do you have plans to coordinate with any of our congressmen or senators or anyone down there?
Would Greg like to speak to that?
I would be more than happy to. So folks, my name is Greg Washelhousman and I'm a partner in the state, he's part of the Bridgewater Junior High, been traveling the last couple of years. Generally been and I have connected to work to build this DC trip. And just, there are some familiar faces and some folks that I don't recognize from the last time I was here, it was actually this meeting last year that I was able to be here with Mr. Krueger and Starksen from their trip last year. So just really quick overview of our company, what we put together, addressing some of the details for itinerary. I know there's other presentations tonight, they'll take longer, so things very quickly. But our group is called Grand Classroom. Grand Classroom is a small business student travel. We're based up in Charlotte, Virginia, right now playing a college in the state of Hollywood. That's why the name isn't all that well-known. I was a teacher in the Hingham Public Schools where I established a national parks travel program and then transitioned into supporting their Washington DC trip. It's actually a model that has kind of been the inspiration for what we're working on here with some of our travel programs. And we work with 400-plus schools nationwide. We do everything from enrichment, travel, outdoor education, all the way up to these large-scale Washington DC, Philadelphia trips. And this is a trip that we're working on together that is modeled after a trip that we're doing in multiple communities. But to come back to the congressperson question, we have a lot of flexibility in our planning to custom-build this tour. So we start with a framework and then those are elements that we bring as we go along. So just very briefly, we do the DC trip quite regularly. We had over 11,000 students travel with us in this last year. About a third of those were on our DC adventures on some of our very large, 300-plus-person class trips. So we're doing the enrichment, but we're also doing the large-scale with our, with our, with our travel. To me, I don't need to go through the benefits of the trip. This is, just so you know, this is the presentation that we have locked up for parents pending your support and approval of the trip. So it's a little more in-depth than we're going to get into now. But talking about the value of this, and as I've come to learn in the last two and a half years of helping the student travel at the middle, the junior high level here, I'm seeing these travel opportunities kind of developing and evolving and how incredible it is for the system to kind of welcome in this stuff. It's just wonderful. So just really quick, our plans for what we're going to do, as our teacher team said, it's an extension of the civics component of the new history of social studies curriculum, but it's also establishing a tradition for end-of-year eighth-grade culminating event. It's about community, it's about celebrating the transition into high school. But we also want to not just focus on the history component of it. Our intention is to bring in other eighth-grade teachers to pull on different curriculum threads to really build a more of a less-Washington DC experience, bringing in some STEM experiences, bringing in some writing and literature components and stuff. So it's not just a straight history trip. And as I said, we're looking to help establish a tradition for the eighth grade. It is something that is done in all of the neighboring communities and with, like I said, the growing tradition of travel at the school, it's a wonderful fit for the community here. Our initial plans, we head down, depending on our approved departure time. It would be wonderful to be able to leave in the morning, get in a, you know, a half-day to three-quarters of a day on our first day, a couple of stops on the way down, our night tour with the monuments. These are classic eighth-grade Washington DC trip components. Visit Arlington, Captain Hill. We have options for what we want to do in the evening. Many schools do like to do the end-of-year social on the Toluca River, dinner cruise. Some groups like to do a little ballgame, some groups go to see a performance to bring the arts into the equation here. These are decisions that we make as a team as we consult with our, our partner teachers that are going to be involved in this. We're going to do some breakout groups at the Smithsonian's. We are, we're going to have students selecting specific focused experience rather than just wandering the National Mall and just browsing multiple Smithsonian's just on the surface. So we're going to have a much more in-depth, focused opportunity for students with specific interests that they'd like to explore through the Smithsonian time. We'll head up to Philly, which is really nice, we'll do an evening walking tour. The next day, we'll go to Independence Hall, National Historic Park, Liberty Bell, National Constitution Center, which is a wonderful, fairly new museum, which schools are really getting excited about attending. We have other options in Philly, depending on our timing that day. And one of the nice things about going to Philly on the way home is that you cut two hours off of that drive home to DC. And as a teacher who for 15 years has been involved in DC travel, as the teacher, that last drive home after a full trip is exhausting. So we've paced it to have our Philly piece to not only bring in another element and a new and unique part of the Washington DC experience, but also to allow us to get back at a reasonable hour to not wreck the students and the teachers for the rest of that week. So some good strategic planning for all of this as well. So my group Grand Classroom, we do all-inclusive pricing, all meals. Students don't have to travel with any money whatsoever. All activities, all fees, we just want to make it as easy as possible on the teachers and on the students. That being said, we include night security in the hotels. Those guards are on all night, all the ones, the teachers check the students in, the teachers can rest assured knowing that any situations are dealt with. Also, our guides are full-time guides. A lot of times with these DC trips, you'll get your on-the-spot, step-on, step-off guides. But our guide team, and we would have one per bus, they stay at the hotel through the night for evening debrief sessions with students. They're there in the mornings, if there are any problems in the night, they, they can help take care of things as well. And of course, part of, part of the nice thing about the way Grand Classroom does things is that all of the budget planning for families is done online and it's personalized and individualized. So we do not say, by this date, you have to have half the payments done. We have the families work with us to establish a budget plan that works well for them. And to the credit of their teachers, launching this now and giving over a year potentially for students to, and families to be able to pay is a wonderful strategy on your part to initiate this at this point. In terms of cost, we're looking at $7.75 for the entire package and that is a $99 deposit which holds a student's seat. And then the family works directly with the company to set up the online payment plan between their date of registration and I believe it's seventy days before departure that can be divided up evenly. I have families that say, "Oh, I'll wait until my tax return comes and, oh, I'll have the trip." We work with that. That's one of the ways we can accommodate all kinds of different communities. We are hoping to get a really good sense of our student numbers before the end of this school year to kind of encourage that sign-up to happen. We were able to sneak in and get the Grand Classroom 2018 trip costs in, but we can only hold that till the end of June. And hopefully, by the time summer rolls around, we'll have a really good sense. Now, your teachers can speak to this more, but they did a parent survey already for general information about this, including activities, assessment of cost, travel dates, things like that. And there already is some good feedback coming in from, from what we're initiating. So I think the key things that we're thinking about here is we've got a timeline in mind to roll out, again, pending your support and approval, starting to get information in students' hands come Monday. By the 23rd, we'd like to have a parent meeting, which I'll be in support of and then teacher-driven and company-supported all throughout the way. Opening our registration by the 24th, so students have more than a year to pay. And email reminders for the last day of school. More meetings when we come back in September for students who perhaps didn't get onboard at the beginning or families that are new to the community, who want to join up. And then our work through the year to accommodate any fundraising initiatives that the teachers have, any kind of itinerary development team that we want to put together. And then having our final plans all in place by February or March and ready to travel in June. By no means do I devalue the travel experience by saying this is a very, this is a standard eighth-grade thing. And to be able to bring this in is great, but our approach to it allows us to really customize this and make this a uniquely East Bridgewater Junior High travel experience and itinerary. So that's our tentative rollout plan that we were discussing. We've met five or six times maybe so far, just in the brainstorming process. And I'm on call through the, through the whole thing, whatever you guys need. And, you know, this is subject to change as the, as we get rolling into the next school year and see what potential conflicts with events and whatnot have. But we have a really good snapshot of what our timeline is going to look like for the rollout of this trip as well. So that's really it. I wanted to just give you a little bit about the company, our plans and the flexibility to custom-build this for the school's needs and answer any questions you might have on the teacher's behalf. And if you guys wanted to add anything, I told you, I could just go all night. I love this. But, but if you had anything to add, please, by all means, feel free. And I covered it all.
Still off under.
That's fine, that's fine.
I have a few more. So I was just looking at this, the updated paper that Ms. Healy passed out. So it's June 8th to June 11th is the corrected dates?
Yes.
Not June 11th to 14th? I didn't get a chance to look it up on the calendar. What days of the week are those?
Monday through Thursday.
And I was looking at this paper and it says hotel breakfast for, it looks like all three, day two, three, and four. And, but the other meals are not included, correct?
They're all in there.
Every, oh, okay.
We're running out of space with the full-headed items. So there will be hotel breakfast every morning, managed for large groups in different waves coming down. Lunches will usually be box lunches that we have in some kind of public space. With a group this size, we need to manage the movement of different smaller groups among the city to allow, still to have an intimate experience, but we will meet up for lunch every day, that is included, and then dinner each night. Sometimes, it depends on where ends their day. Sometimes we can do large group meals. And that's all part of our planning. But yes, all meals are included, including an allotment for lunch on your travel down and allotment for students for dinner on the travel back. Yeah, all-inclusive.
This is, it's 40 people per, per coach, per bus?
So we priced that out for 40. We were trying to be conservative in our pricing based on student involvement, but that gives us the room to, you know, if we're coaching, if we're going to the second, to the third. And that's the standard price in the new industry, specified by coach, rather than...
How many people fit on that?
Fifty-six, per coach. The, the, the new luxury mode of coaches for it. So it's 56 passenger buses, but again, that price is based on 40, just to be on the safe side for our... So is there any mechanism for kids who can't afford to pay, or can't afford a full price? I know you're fundraising, but it's a financial requirement.
So the payment plan, some of the suggestions in the payment, excuse me, the payment plan are that students could reach out to family members first and move a birthday present or potentially an upcoming holiday. Hey, I'm going on this great trip, here's my private account information, if you'd like to make a donation.
Yeah, I'll just expand on that for just really quick comment. And that's, that's part of... And that's part of, that flexibility in the payment plan is all online, you can direct the money to the student. It's what we call the interest fundraising. Sometimes what we'll do on the company end is we'll do postcards that students can hand out as part of their efforts. We're really open to working with whatever we want to do in terms of fundraising, and then we do the building according to however you want it to be. So we have basically an open accounting system that allows us to accommodate the school and community.
And one of the ideas was to reach out to the community businesses, bridge that community school, and see if there were people in the community that would like to make donations in support of students, whether it was a small donation or a scholarship method, to reach out to maybe those students that are more needy than others. And then more traditional fundraising, which is what we were going to work on in this summer.
So I guess what I'm asking is short of like a scholarship, it is ultimately up to each student who comes with their $775. So you mentioned like, you know, birthday presents or holidays, that's still on that family to come up with the money, whether it's indoor or present. So is there any kind of a mechanism where like a student activity fund or any outside fundraising where if you have like five kids that can raise 500 but can't raise $775, they can make up the difference?
Yeah, so at this point, I don't want to misspeak for anybody else, but at this point, we were going to rely more on that bridging the gap with the community potential and individual student fundraising to see how well they do to go towards that $775.
I have another question. So on this, on this email, it says for next year's eighth graders, so if there were other students interested, would they just definitely not bring their students to any other grade?
We approached it as seventh, excuse me, the current seventh grade going into eighth grade. Correct.
What staff chaperones will you have?
It's a 10 to 1 ratio.
Of faculty?
Yes.
So will all the, will the eighth grade staff, all the faculty all be going on the trip, or is that...
We would have to discuss that with the individual teachers.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for my colleagues and say that they're going.
Okay.
But that would be the intent, is to reach out to that collective group first because we're the ones that are going to know the kids.
Right.
And we want that close relationship on a trip of this magnitude.
Sure.
That is our intent, correct?
Okay. We have parent volunteers to go along too, or just, so it's only faculty?
Correct.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make a comment. I think this is a great trip and it's long overdue. You know, it's a trip I took when I was in eighth grade and it's kind of been phased out over the years. And looking at the itinerary, I've taken both my boys to do all of that because I was a history major, so it's near and dear to my heart. But I just think the kids will get, this is just probably the most spectacular trip that we could offer as far as, you know, a foundation, foundational trip. So thank you guys for putting this together.
And on our end, for the planning purposes, I invite you to give us feedback of things that you as a committee would like to see represented in our itinerary, that you feel represents the school and the community. We have a long menu of options and ideas, and if there's things that you did on your eighth grade DC trip that you're still thinking about today or pushed you in a direction to go into your field, that's the kind of input we as a community, I'm sorry, we as a company welcome. So please, by all means, I am not putting more work on your plate, guys, but I'm just saying, that gets me really excited on the company end because that's something that we like to work with, with a lot of our communities. Some communities we work with have, you know, significant community members buried at Arlington. Can we do something visiting or, you know, that grave, things like, so let's make this like personal to this community. So thank you for that support and input. That's great.
I never had the opportunity to have a field trip to DC when I was in school. Back then, Philadelphia was the capital of the country. But you'll get my vote with one stipulation. I would love to have, when they're done with the trip, to have the kids come back to one of our meetings and tell us something that they learned that made a difference for them. I would love to hear what they pick up. There's so much down there, it's so rich. I would love to hear what they learn. Maybe that'd be a tradition going forward, that everyone goes on a trip, I don't care where it is, and come back and say, okay, tell us something that you learned. I think that would be really neat, so. Great idea.
Yeah.
Certainly get my support. Thank you.
Well, I echo what Trista said. I think my sophomore year close-up trip to Washington in high school was what sparked me to becoming a history teacher. Honestly, it was the thing that started it. So I think this is awesome for these kids, it really is.
Thank you for putting all this together. Rob, do you have anything?
Nope, I think you covered it.
Thank you.
I think it's important to note that this is a huge trip for the junior high, but it's the trip that they need to take. And it is long coming. I'm very pleased with that. I've been waiting for, to have someone pick this up and go with it to DC because I think it's so important. Our kids need exposure. They need exposure to civic responsibility. They need exposure to political responsibility. They need exposure to the outside and how they, how we're making laws. Why is this important? What can you do about it? And you do have a voice. And I spoke to some girls the other day and said, you do have a voice whether it's here or whether it's outside of school, you have a voice. And I think when you go to DC, that what I had learned when I went there, and my father was a social history teacher, what I did learn is that I have a voice and that that's what the Constitution is about. So I'm really excited to see that. And I'm really excited that you're going to go see the steps that Rocky ran up. I think that's really important.
Requested that.
That's really important.
Should we go to Rocky's office?
Thank you. Ben, Jen, thank you.
One suggestion I would have, just for me personally, is the Thousand Points of Light walkway that's around the corner from the Willard Hotel on your way over to DC. The plaque at the beginning of that talks about volunteerism and it is moving. I would love every kid to have to, every student to have to read that and understand what it means. It's just like one of those sort of hidden little gems somewhere along the way, but if you're walking that way, just draw their attention to that. It is really a moving, moving piece.
Will do.
Thank you.
Gordon, I think you need to go. We've been talking about this for a long time now.
You come up short. I'll be there. I might fly down and meet you, but I don't know, I'll take the bus, but...
Pardon?
How many hours in the bus?
As I spent my day sitting in Boston traffic with a Boston tour today. Five to seven, probably more on the seven end of things.
That's a pretty good clip.
It would be, it would be great.
Five hours.
It would be great to get an early start to get through, you know, DC before traffic.
Seven hours to DC?
Yeah, seven.
Yeah, three and a half to New York.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Thought Philly was seven hours. Wow.
Thank you.
Take the Essela.
I'll weigh it.
Shall we take a motion to approve the trip to Washington DC for eighth grade students?
Enthusiastically moved.
Moved by Gordon, second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck. That sounds fun.
Thank you.
It's great.
We look forward to having preliminary numbers very soon.
Awesome. Thank you.
We'd be excited to come back in the fall, just to give you an update on our itinerary because we're going to be working on it this summer and, you know, some of those elements that you've mentioned that we can get in there. Absolutely. So thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mrs. Deborah Seeley, East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School Foreign Language Teacher. She's going to be requesting approval from the school to take an out-of-country trip with foreign language students to Spain and Italy during the April break in 2020. Welcome.
Thank you. Would you like me to have some students with me who just came?
Sure.
Sure.
Paris trip, maybe China. Four. Do you want to, you want to talk about the Paris trip first because that's on the agenda too? Could you just talk about it?
Sure. I think that's why I think she wants to do this right, you're going to do this first and then, because we're going to have a couple of videos going.
Okay.
So I think if you get this one out of the way.
Okay, sure.
And then you'll get to...
Paris too?
Busy.
Yeah. And then I'll have to get, then I'll have to get up, move Dr. Williams, come back, move Dr. Williams, get up, move Dr. Williams, come back.
So yes, we're proposing, we have had, started a program of bringing through the Foreign Language Department students over to either France or Spain and trying to flip-flop years. So we went to Paris, then we went to Spain, then we went to Paris, then we went to Spain, Portugal, then we went to Paris this year. And so next year, I'd like to bring them to Spain and Italy and bring them to where the language came from, to Rome, then up to Florence to look at some of the fine art there, and then take a short plane ride over to Madrid and take the Ave, high-speed train to Barcelona if approved. So I think they would get a chance to see, you know, two cities in Spain and also to get to see two great cities in Italy as well.
I think that's a great idea.
It's very close to each other, you know, the countries in Europe, so you, I know Paris, we stay in-depth and we just see that city really in-depth and well, but I think it's nice too when you're so close and to see a lot of the great other cities in Europe and Spain in particular.
Some of the words in Italian are similar to Spanish.
You can speak your Spanish and get away with it in Italy.
I was at Manuel Hall and I overheard some Italian tourists and I knew what they were saying.
Yeah.
Because they were speaking Italian, but I knew the words because they were similar to Spanish. It was interesting.
Portuguese is the same, so I think it'd be a great opportunity. This trip is a little longer than some of the other ones, so it's a, we would look to leave like on a Thursday instead of leaving on Saturday. So I don't know if, you know, just want to make that upfront if this trip were approved. And...
I think it's just important to note that traveling and the experience that it's had is educational. It's maturing, it's growth, it's development, it's character. So all those things that we try to do here at school, I think this is just a great learning experience from the get-go. So you have my, you don't have any objections with I'm leaving on a Thursday. I don't think Dr. Williams is, are you, are you thinking about going?
I would love to go. Send one kid to Costa Rica, one to Spain.
Move to Italy, Spain.
No. I mean, as Superintendent said, you know, it's learning at a distance. I mean, so certainly it's not missing out on education and academics, it's just getting a different experience that they wouldn't have while they're here. I agree. And it's nice there from a tight-knit community here and, you know, then it's great to kind of take them out of that community with all the skills they've learned and the support they've had over the years and see them on a stage in Europe and they just are great. I mean, this tour, we had compliments from the tour guides that this was one of the most, the best groups they've had, the most polite, fun, you know, adventure-seeking but in a great way. And also from like the hotel staff. And then the last thing on the plane on the way home, the stewardess came over and said, I have to say, and there were other students from other schools on the plane, she's like, I have to say that these kids are the most polite kids we've ever had, you know, they just are, please, thank you, and just, you know, so they really do us proud when we take them over to Europe too. So it's nice.
Were they still, were you still speaking a different language on the way home?
On the plane, they were, they were...
Took a little bit to get used to not hearing French everywhere.
I'm sure.
The number of students that you would anticipate would go?
Well, I would like for this next trip coming up to keep it to about like 37, 39. That's been the range we've had in the past. We try to open it, the intent when we started the program was to have it as a perk for the students to take higher level language classes of like levels three and four, Spanish or French, because they show like a serious commitment to, you know, becoming global citizens and wanting to be exposed to that. And we don't want it just to be like a, just a fun excursion. We want them to really be serious about getting something from the cultural experience. And that, you know, usually lent it to be about 37, 39. This last trip, I didn't design the trip, I sort of inherited it from a coworker who left the district. So we had 77 people in Paris, France, and it was, it was a large group to move around. They did well, but we had to be like, you know, look, when that, we, these guys were part of my, my group of six that I was going with, but like when the subway train would come up, we'd need to make sure that our six got on together, we got off together. It was manageable, but I think it's a little bit more personal if we have a smaller group. So I'd be looking to keep it, you know, top it off at like 37, 39.
And the ratio of chaperones to students?
Six to one with EF. So we have a close ratio and it's, it's just done well because that's, that's what we do is we have each group kind of reporting to one chaperone for most of the time. And then it's nice too if the group can all stay together. On this last trip, there were times we needed to divide into kind of two groups to manage the, you know, the smaller sites, like we went to Versailles together and some of the other things, but even going up to the Eiffel Tower, we had to go in three different sections, just what they could accommodate, so.
So for selection for students, I know for example for the Costa Rica trip, the kids who have shown interest had to write an essay on why they feel, you know, they should be selected. And I'm sure it depends on how many kids apply or show interest, but how would it be managed the same for this based on the selection process? Because I'm thinking that this is probably going to be a widely popular trip.
We haven't done it in the past and it's sort of worked out if we just said that first preference went to juniors and seniors who are enrolled in foreign language courses because that's a smaller, you know, population of the school. And then if we still had spots available, then we opened it up to kids who had completed a Level 2 French or Spanish. And just doing that, it seemed to take care of itself.
So typically, the numbers kind of fall naturally right there?
Yeah, because not every student takes foreign language or not every student will continue on to the levels three and four. And we're trying to give that perk, you know, to stick with it, there'll be benefits from it. So we started the Foreign Language Honor Society and the trip program too. It's, I think it's paying off and I think our numbers are growing, so.
What does hotel security look like on trips like this?
The hotel security is just, we don't have anybody in the halls there standing guard overnight, but we also have tour guides who stay with us for the whole trip. They meet us right at the airport, they travel with us on every one of the excursions, they're at the hotel, sleeping in the hotel if there's ever a question or a problem. And then you have, you know, EF works with hotels that they work with, so they're used to student groups. So even like one night, I think a student came down to the front desk to ask a question or something from the dorm, you know, the person on staff at the desk, and we got a call right away and were notified, like, one of your students came down to ask a question. I mean, that was the only thing that happened, but, so they're kind of aware and they know that there's student population there and that, you know, everybody's kind of looking out, but...
Gotcha.
Yeah. I think by the time they get back, you guys are so tired, I don't think anybody is looking at you.
Well, no, I wasn't concerned about our kids going to do something. I was more concerned about, you know, travel in Europe is perhaps more dangerous than it was 10 or 20 years ago and I just, you know...
So you mean the hotel's security itself? It's very modern. I mean, they have the cards like you would have, you know, to get into the room, they limit the number of them. There was still the same like procedures in place. You can't even get up the hotel unless you tap your card. I mean, it was very modern.
Okay.
So it wasn't like an old-fashioned thing where doors are kind of around and propped open at all.
Gotcha.
You couldn't even, you had to use your key to get in the elevator. Yeah. Like I couldn't get downstairs.
Or the stairs.
Yeah, or the stairs. Like you couldn't even get upstairs without a key.
There was, I never felt unsafe for anything.
It's good.
Are there any issues around the fundraising components? Again, for, you know, this is obviously a little bit, you have to dig a little deeper into your pockets.
Yeah.
For a trip like this. So do they have a volume of their time to come together with the cash? Does EF provide any kind of financing or personalization options?
They have financing and personalization options. When they, when they enroll, they, it's the same type of a thing where they get an account and they can have people gift them money or they can get, put on a payment plan or pay in chunks if they want to take a summer job and pay away that way. It's kind of, it's a big trip and then to do fundraising of like candy bars and then, or events and then try to proportionate between all the kids, I think it's, it's a, I don't know, it would help that much and it would be a lot to...
I was thinking more about the need time that the families have to put together a personal plan.
Yeah. This one I had started the process, I think in February and it just got delayed with a little, a couple of administrative changes and things. So, so this one would be for next April vacation as well, so it's a little less than a year, but I think it's manageable. And these kids are a little older and often have jobs too.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, they can bear more of the responsibility.
Which is a good thing, I think, to...
Yeah.
Did you guys have to chip in?
Earn your way, it's not a bad thing.
So the kids have the ability to stay for two extra days beyond when the rest of the group comes back?
They wouldn't, I don't think, we're not going to extend it to the Versailles, Versailles trip. We haven't accessed that option. And usually if we do excursions even, you know, when I run the, plan the trips, I like to build them in so everybody goes, because I know this year there was a lot of, we had a Loire Valley excursion and a couple of like Giverny Gardens of Monet, which was beautiful. And was another one, Paris by Night. And then not everybody signed up, but then at the last minute, everybody wanted to go, you know? So sometimes I'll just, if I'm building in an excursion like that, I'll just build it into the trip and have everybody just go. I think it stops the kind of confusion at the end of people trying to add on. I like to keep the pack together.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Nope.
So at this time I would take a motion to approve the request of an out-of-country trip for the foreign language students to Spain and Italy during the April 2020 school break.
So moved.
Moved by Rob, second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do have some pictures from the Paris trip. If you'd like, I could put them on and maybe the students could...
Did the three of you go on the Paris trip?
Yes.
Well, what did you learn about France or Paris or any of these?
Everything.
Everywhere we went, we learned about the guides and we learned about all the kings and all the history and, you know, when you go to the gardens of Monet and the artists. Everywhere we went.
Good.
We just got to decide the group starting out, we had seventy-seven people. For sixty-six, travel, love you, chat. I think one of the things that was, you're famous for this trip was that on our first day, we fly overnight and then we, it's wonderful experience to get out, sleeping too much after a plane ride, visiting Paris by Sunday. So the first stop was Notre Dame, a little tour around the city. And just looking up to that on the day that we saw it and we, you know, in the church here. And then here, the tour guide was teaching the kids about flying actresses in a graphic style and was innovative because of, like, higher walls and bigger windows, because it supported the waves. She's actually showing the kids how to fly an actress and seeing it's very, you know, artificial. But we have to read about the...
You walked to dinner? Hotel?
Plenty of artwork, like Renaissance artwork, what we, a lot of them are safe. And I believe, like the stained glass windows were also safe, but there's like a mixture that we learned in the little tour guide spots. There's a mixture, like a coloration, the stained glass that makes it blue, but we can't recreate it, so thank God that wasn't.
Any special events that have happened in Notre Dame? Can you think of one?
She was telling us about, our tour guide was telling us about, you know, a picture of this street during the Black Queen, during the French Revolution, like this is the tour guide. You don't mind?
So I put these two pictures in and that's my, that's our English teacher, my helper took this picture because I think one of the most important parts about this trip is being with your teachers for a whole week and getting to learn them in a very different way and becoming like really good friends with them, because you're not just in a classroom for an hour a day with them. You're there all weekend in your chaperones. So Miss Hulk and I took a lot of pictures and some of my other teachers and I took a lot of pictures. And that was one of the most important parts of this trip to me was getting to know them very well. Like it's important for these foreign language trips and like the Washington DC one and all the California trips to see your teachers as people and not just your teachers. So you're learning more, you're learning about your community and your teachers as well as the culture together. And I love that. That's one of my favorite pictures from the trip, even though it's just us with gelatos.
And that goes for, you know, your friends as well. You spend eighteen hours a day for seven days with them and, you know, it's, you learn a lot about your friendships and about your friends and you get, you get really close. Like some of the people that we went on the trip with, I've never, you know, I wouldn't be as, like I, we've improved our friendships and it was really nice to see all these people and really get to know them.
Works with the staff too, we have, you know, Miss Craytrick as a new French teacher and so it was really great for her and to be together with like some people from maybe upstairs in the building that she doesn't know as well, because we're on the little school floor. So it's great all around for, I think, a little school bar dance room. This was the day after the Notre Dame fire, we had gone by in a little bus tour, we can kind of see some of the smoke, you know, make sure some of the windows, what they say. This is Versailles. Do you guys have any, have you got recollections of a little Versailles?
It's gorgeous.
Especially, I mean, the gardens alone, I remember we walked out and we saw like, we saw a bunch of like the hedges you can see in the background and we were like, "Is this the gardens? Is this it?" I mean, it's not big, but it's still pretty, it's still pretty gorgeous. And then we got a map and the map looked nothing like the portion we were looking at. And turns out it was just a tiny little square in the corner. The gardens are massive.
Miles.
That's, that's the garden on the, that's only one portion of just a small part of the garden. It's huge.
The day we were there, the first time, it was fourth time I've been there, it's the only time I've been there and they have waters, water going in the fountains. And we were there for the music.
Yes.
It was like all this music typed in, so you felt like you were, you know, the king of France.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How was the weather?
The weather was gorgeous.
It's not supposed to be, but it always is. Like it's always like seventy, seventy-seven.
I packed, I packed long sleeves and like jeans. We had to go shopping.
Yeah.
Shop, as they say, for shorts and skirts. It was, it got so hot.
It was gorgeous, sunny. We never had a, like, I think one of the days was cloudy, but didn't rain. It was beautiful. It just worked out really good.
It sprays a little head, so like the air smells like flowers. I mean, Paris was really hot.
Everything was in bloom.
Yeah. That day.
No more. It didn't rain for the last one.
Yeah. Well, which one of you guys went on the Loire Valley excursion?
I think we all did.
Oh, did you all?
Yeah, this was the Loire Valley. These are all the castles that, this was a vacation castle for, I think, Louis XIV. You know, this is where they went on vacation and it's a whole castle. Our tour guide was telling us how like these are the castles that inspired all the Disney movies and like Sleeping Beauty.
Yeah, this one inspired Sleeping Beauty.
From Bath and Paris, this is the Musée d'Orsay, which is the Impressionist Museum. So the Louvre has, it would take three months if you wanted to visit every room in the Louvre if you just did it all day long, every day. It's massive. So it's wonderful and overwhelming too, but then the Musée d'Orsay is all the Impressionist work, so you guys remember.
Yeah, I loved the Musée d'Orsay. It was, like you get to see all the sculptures from like ancient, ancient times and then moved to Monet and moved to Van Gogh and it was beautiful.
Yeah. And the building itself, the interior, it looks a lot like Grand Central Station because it used to be used as a, it used to, for like nineteen years after it was built, it was used as a train station and then it was turned into a museum after that, but it's gorgeous.
Are electronic trains?
I didn't hear, we didn't hear anything about it.
We missed it a little bit.
Yeah.
This is outside of that museum again. You'll see some of the students dressed up for the park going through.
Oh, yeah. We had some, some students in suits.
They're coordinating how for Dave.
Tuesday's text day.
This is the Eiffel Tower, we usually go up in the evening. And this group was kids, some of the kids in this group were a little nervous about going up. They were afraid of heights and I am too a little bit, but I talked to them about how I talked myself up. It was like, "You don't want to say you went to the Eiffel Tower and didn't go up." So we made it up, everybody went up the Eiffel Tower.
The top is actually, like the third floor is much better than the second floor. The third floor, or like the very top has a cage around you, so you don't feel like you're going to fall, but the second tier, it's just like a railing and it feels like you're going to fall off. So definitely go to the third.
And there's no skyscrapers, so you still have a good view of the city because there's a building ordinance that keeps the levels of the buildings, you know, so it's six floors maybe.
It's amazing.
Kind of nice view of the whole city. It should be tacky that it's lit up with flashes, but it's not. It's just really nice. Well, this is Sudly Monet's gardens in Giverny and that was an excursion that not everybody went on, but some of us did. It was the first time EF had offered this. This was beautiful. Did you guys go on this one too?
I think I was the only one.
You were the only one.
We didn't. Yeah. So like the gardens are so, oh my gosh, so pretty. I signed, I mean, I signed up for all the excursions because I'm that person and I wanted to go see absolutely everything. But this was the last day and it was like, was it? Yeah, it was one of the last days and it was like the perfect way to end it. Oh my gosh, that excursion needs to be added. I think it was one of the best experiences. It was quiet, like we were outside of the city. It was quiet, like you could see like the garden, like you could see his paintings and like where, because we got to see his paintings a few days before and I think the Musée d'Orsay. So you could, I like, I could remember some of the paintings and like see him in the garden. It was, it was really cool.
Yeah.
Yes, his house is also very awesome. He has like a bright yellow dining room and a bright blue kitchen. It was just like, it was crazy, just like, yeah. You could tell, like you could tell just like where his paintings were taking place, like throughout his house and in the garden, like you could just see what he was envisioning.
His genius too is that, you know, if you see the Water Lily paintings, I thought he just came upon that and painted it. He designed that Japanese garden himself, like planted in his head and then got seeds and planted it all and cultivated it. And it actually flooded once and he had to redo it again. And so it just goes to show like his vision of, that he envisioned that and then grew it and then painted it, you know? So he could, genius is just a beautiful artist. I think that's it for our slide tour today. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to take the kids at ease.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you for coming.
Should we keep, should probably keep going?
Oh, the parentship? I think definitely in the future, maybe do put a limit on the kids, even though like I wouldn't change my trip. I loved it just the way it was, but keeping everyone together, it was, it was a little difficult at times.
To go to all of one restaurant together and have their staff make seventy-seven meals for, and accommodate for allergies.
It was crazy.
What was your favorite, what was your favorite meal?
Well, we got free time for lunch every day. That was, and we get to eat in French cafes and have like authentic pastries and...
What did you like the best?
I liked the croque monsieur.
I was going to say croque monsieur.
Which is, it's like a grilled cheese, except the cheese is about like a centimeter thick and it's on, it's on the outside.
It's on the outside.
Not good for you at all.
No. It's a ham and cheese sandwich with a layer of cheese. Couldn't finish it, but...
Good quiche, good quiche there.
Good quiche.
Yeah.
Croissants.
Cheese anywhere.
Baguettes.
Yeah, anything you ate there was going to be ham, cheese or bread. You had no other, you had no other...
Francis, Francis sixty percent carbs.
Yeah. You had no other options roaming the streets, that's it.
Why do you think that if you were to go on to your secondary education, going to college, if you were to study abroad?
Absolutely.
Oh, yes, of course.
Yeah, you learn how, it was, it's a nice intro to travel and a nice intro to different cultures to, you know, realize like what your limits are, what you can do, what you need to know, like genuinely.
Especially when it's like planned out for you and you don't have to worry about that part. You just have to mainly worry about like what you're, like you get to just be there and learn where, and then like everything else is already planned out. You just follow, you just follow the plan. You get to focus, because it's, I mean, it's called EF Tours, Education First, and that really, that really was, it was that, so.
Absolutely.
Because we didn't have to worry about any of the plan and we just, we went to the places they told us to go and we learned what they taught us.
Yeah. And it's about the epitome of a, of an interactive learning experience and in my opinion, it's probably the best. I learned so much on the trip and, and more than just like the history of Paris, but also, but also like the history and just the culture, the culture in general. And, you know, how people act in Paris as opposed to how people act in Boston and...
Our tour guides were fantastic at that, introducing like, "This is what French people say, this is what French people do," you know, like...
They both lived in Paris. Really cafe etiquette.
Apartments of nine square meters.
And, yeah, I remember I came back and France became so much more easier for me to understand because I was listening to people speaking it at a rapid pace, so yeah.
Juniors. We're juniors.
Three.
Three. Plus the seventh and eighth grade like introduction years.
So were you speaking French when you were there?
Yeah.
I speak Spanish, so I was, I'm in, yeah, I'm in Miss Cilly's...
She did a good job.
I'm in Miss Cilly's Spanish class, so I went there and actually, I don't know how my brain did it, but I heard foreign language and I knew what they were trying to ask me and what came out of my mouth was Spanish at some times, yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah, I answered with "C" in gracias at some points, but I eventually got the hang of it.
Did a French teacher?
She was an amazing help.
She studied?
Yeah, yeah.
Lived in Paris.
She lived there, probably in Senegal.
She knew everything. She took us around the museum.
Yeah, she would, like, we were in the Musée d'Orsay, she took us around and she was like, you know, "I want to spend time with my juniors" and she took us around, like, "This is what this is." Because she, in Paris, she took art classes in Paris and learning and coming to the museums and so she was, she was an amazing person to have around and it was awesome to hear her stories of her life in Paris and watch her speak to French people.
Oh, yeah.
That was our favorite.
Like we, we hear her in class, like speaking at our level of French and it's, you know, it's a different thing when you hear her actually, or hear any foreign language teacher actually have a conversation. You know, they really do know a lot about the, about the culture and the language.
Well, that makes me feel better.
Yeah.
That's how their evaluation works.
Yeah.
Now I know they can really speak the language.
They should really enhance the trip.
Are you going to go to Italy or Spain?
I would, yeah, I would.
I don't know. I wish.
Have you thought about trying together?
I was looking into it, yeah, I might. I don't know. Depends on how, what senior year it has until for us, so.
I think that going on this experience and coming back will develop, so.
Yeah.
You're just a new person, I think, when you come back after an experience like this. I think you're ready to go, you're so, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. Thank you, guys.
He is one more time.
Oh, get out of the way again, yes.
So we spent our time over April break in California, traveling all over the state was another amazing experience for our students. I'm sorry we didn't bring any students with us tonight, but some of them had...
They're all at matches and...
Yeah.
MCAS.
MCAS. So, but yeah, it was, it was an amazing trip. We created this Adobe Spark page based on a recommendation from Aaron Fisher, so we'll definitely put that on Twitter and share that with the parents of the students who went on the trip. So we'll make that available to you guys to scroll through.
Scroll it?
Yeah, go for it. So we flew into Las Vegas.
Whatever you say.
Vegas stays in Vegas.
That's right, which was literally us just going to the airport and then getting out of us, so.
That's right, uh, which was literally us just going to the airport and then getting out of us, uh, so.
Sorry, Mrs. K.
Um, so, yeah, and then we made our way to Death Valley. Uh, so you can keep scrolling through Greg, sorry. Um, so this is one of our stops along the way. We stayed at this amazing hotel and they had a horse ranch there, so the kids were really excited about that. Our first day, we went to Zabriskie Point and took just breathtaking photos. Um, you can see pictures of Golden Canyon coming up in the background. Students were enjoying the sunset, relaxing, taking it all in and, you know, the first things that came out of the students' mouths were, wow, I can breathe out here. The air is so fresh and clean and, um, you know, they were just in awe and so many of them were excited, you know, they, they had never been to California before, they'd never been to this part of the country, so just really excited to get there and see something new, as were we. This is my first time in California too.
Zabriskie Point was actually our starting point. Uh, we went that evening to check it out and uh, then went back to our hotels, but in the morning we came back to Zabriskie Point and that's when we went into the canyons.
Yeah. So there's some more of our pictures from Death Valley the next day. So we took um, a decent hike. What, what was the mileage we did?
Down, we went from Zabriskie Point uh down through uh Golden Canyon, which is where the original Star Wars was done. About that, I just kinda lost on the kid a little bit.
I was excited.
Really.
Uh, and it comes out onto the valley floor, so our coach dropped us off at the trail and picked us up on the valley floor and um, it was pretty wild because on the valley floor there, you're two hundred, two hundred and eighty-two feet below sea level. You're at the lowest point on the continent. You can look across the valley, you see Telescope Peak, which is well over twelve thousand feet, and that relief and that distance is just absolutely astounding. So it was like the perfect Death Valley hike. Um, it was about upper eighties, it was beautiful.
It was perfect, dry, yeah.
Desert was in bloom, driving into it, it was just a wonderful time to be there. And you know, for, for middle schoolers especially, um, this is, this is kind of one of those, uh, I don't know, it's not your mainstream park. You know, they have this now connection to this, this very unique and special place and I think, uh, you know, just to be exposed to, to the desert and uh, the low elevation and the dryness and whatnot. It, it just, this was my, as, 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 growing up, this was my first national park experience, so I shared that with the kids and I said, you know, this is gonna stick with you, this is a special place. Not a lot of people come to this place.
I have to talk about these shirts too, that the boys are wearing in the background, so um, Jen Fury's son Lucian actually designed those. He drew the pattern, had them made up, and then brought them in for all the students on the trip, so that was really awesome. Had all the places that we went to, so we got to wear those on the first day there. It was really amazing. And then you'll see some pictures coming up along the way. Um, so we went to Badwater Basin and went to the salt flats and um, we all licked the ground. Because you have to taste the salt, right? So um, we walked a little ways off the trail and uh, I wish I had the video. I'll have to figure out a way to embed it in the slideshow, but literally one of our students like went at it. Really savored the ground. Yeah, it was pretty good. So um, there we are at the salt flats, which is really amazing. Just beautiful.
There we go.
Oh, yeah. Some chaperones and students get in and that too, but, um, but you could just see, I mean, for miles and miles, it's just such a different landscape and it's really like being in a different planet, just incredible. We went to the sand dunes and some students rolled down the dunes. We had a chaperone or two.
Some chaperones rolled down the hill.
Yeah, it was really great. Um, and we had a decent sized group. We had forty-five students um, with us, but that is such a great number.
It worked out as a good number.
Manageable. Um, we're a one to seven chaperone.
It was one bus and we were able to keep everybody together.
Yeah.
Uh, was a little bit of difficulties trying to get forty, well fifty some odd people fed at night, but it worked out really well. The kids were great.
It definitely did. Grand Classroom does a great job organizing that too. Um, and then we went to Alabama Hills, so this is an old western movie set. Um, Greg could probably speak to some of the movies, some of the films, John Wayne classics, um, but a lot of movies.
The major series was all filmed here.
Yeah.
Cause uh, right here is the Sierra Nevada.
It's beautiful.
These foothills were, and some of the pictures that we were able to take, the foreground, midground, the background, it just, it looked like a, like a backdrop. In a theater, uh, just with this incredible view. This is, this is kind of a little bit of a gem of a, of a stop, not, not a ton of people go up this particular route this time of year, so it's pretty cool to be able to hike out here and um, you know, check out the snowy mountains in the background after coming right out of Death Valley.
Yeah. Yeah, they, that was an arch that you could look through and see the Sierra Nevadas and I don't know if we have any pictures of the kids, but they literally climbed up on top of it and had their pictures taken up there, not just inside it.
Yeah. So this is all just on our second day. I mean, we really did, the great thing about this trip is it's so jam-packed with things on the itinerary. I mean, there's really no downtime. We're going all day. Um, we get to see so much while we're out there, really take advantage of our opportunities and then the kids are pretty wiped when they get back to the hotel at night, so.
And this was the Giant Sequoias and that's actually bark on the left-hand side.
We're at Mariposa Grove. Um, we went up into Yosemite. This was our first experience up that way. Um, and it's just awe inspiring. I mean, the trees are massive.
That's actually tree roots, right there on the left.
Our kids and chaperones there. So um, our time in Yosemite, we had two days. Um, we were lucky enough to throw rock climbing when we were there. We went rappelling down a rock wall. We had a nice nature hike. We actually walked eleven point six miles that day, I think it was. So tons of hiking, um, saw the waterfall.
The vistas were amazing. Everywhere you looked, there was another waterfall.
Yeah, it was incredible. And we did have some rain while we were out there, but it did not damper the kids' spirits. I mean, everybody was excited to be there, to be outside, to be, you know, we, we watched um, Free Solo.
Yep.
On our way, so the kids were super stoked to go rock climbing, yeah. We didn't Free Solo ourselves, but.
We didn't rock climb that one.
We did.
Walked right up to it though.
Go to the base of Half Dome or like.
Not Half Dome, but we did for LCAP, yeah. Yeah, it was awesome to look up.
Look up and see there.
Incredible, yeah. And Half Dome's kind of in the cloud cover in the background there, but it was still beautiful. I mean, the fog and the mist rolling over the hills and the mountains is gorgeous. Yeah.
Not staged at all, right?
The water, so we went at a perfect time, um, because all the snow was melting and, you know, the waterfalls were full force, so April is like pristine time to go. And it's just before all the crowds start coming in to visit too, so we really felt like, you know, we had the nature trails to ourselves and it was really peaceful, very serene. And one thing too, I wanted to speak to that Delaney had already mentioned, I mean, the time to bond with the kids when you're out there, it's so different from being in the classroom. Um, I mean, you're learning science and ecology and geology outdoors in nature, you can't beat it. Um, but then also just developing a whole other level of personal relationships with the kids. I mean, that was challenging.
Yeah.
Rock climbing was really challenging and, you know, we're all kind of supporting each other and cheering each other on at the bottom of the rock face and, I mean, it's such a good feeling and then the. What's that?
Can you go with it? That's us?
Yeah.
We're going to that.
Yeah, I think, I'm on one of those. There's, yeah, Cole Delvecchio there climbing. Yeah, it was um, it was great.
We did a program with Yosemite Mountain Eering School, which is one of the most famous climbing groups there. It's uh, the original old school climbers back in the sixties, fifties and sixties were the ones who established this, this rock climbing school. So everything that we did was um, designed for someone who's never done it before, uh, but the routes that they took and the things that they taught kids who had experience on rock walls, um, were really fulfilled by the experience. And everybody could come home and say, I climbed or learned to climb in Yosemite. And the authenticity of it and it just was, it was real and uh, everybody who wanted to, to get up the wall got a chance to climb.
You're on a belay system, so somebody's, you know, down there anchoring you and you kinda have to find the footholds and, you know, all the little nooks and crannies. You're wearing rock climbing shoes, so it's very cool. Um, and then we went to Henry Cowell, saw the giant redwoods.
We, we paced our trip as doing a desert section, a mountain section, and a coastal section. So everything was kind of programmed to go along with. So this was the beginning of our arrival on the coast.
Yeah, we saw all of.
We had forty-two kids around that tour.
Yeah. And it's just, there's a quiet walk through that park, so it's silent. You're walking through. We took a moment, sat, Greg, you know, had us do some meditation where we just kind of listened to the sights and the sound and you could keep your eyes open or closed. Um, it just felt really good and a lot of the kids were even talking about, you know, feeling the energy of the forest and, you know, yeah, it was really neat.
We should do like big screen right?
Yeah.
Big one.
Oh, Jamestown gold panning, that was fun.
That was fun.
It was a little side trip we did. We, we, we focused a lot on California history, so we, we had an opportunity to go out in the, some of the, you know, original Gold Rush rivers with.
And everybody got some gold.
Costume prospectors and learn all the, the science behind gold panning and.
Yeah, it was, everybody got gold.
Yeah.
Whether they thought, some of the kids told me, they thought maybe Bryant was that guy there, he might've put his hand in his pocket and slipped some gold in their pan, but that's fine. They all got to go home with a little bit, so yeah, it was cute. It was a really good time. So we were in those waiters and.
We couldn't get these guys out of the river at the end.
Yeah, that's uh, Mark and Pat there. Monterey Bay was incredible. The aquarium was amazing, you know, integration of artwork and, you know, steam really, um, obviously all the animals. There were In-N-Out Burger, the kids were very excited about that. Uh, Santa Cruz Boardwalk. It was really fun for the kids too.
Yeah, they had a Pacific.
Pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, for some of them, you know, their first time ever putting their feet in the Pacific Ocean, so it was really fun. And then we, yeah, kayaking around Monterey Bay. We had um, guides out there with us who, you know, were very well versed in the area. We saw sea otters.
Sea lions and seals and.
Starfish, it was really neat. They gave us a little bit of info about the biodiversity in the area.
Logos?
Logos, yeah. Incredible views. Um, the seals were giving birth to pups, so we were able to see a lot of little babies swimming around and hanging out with their moms. It was really neat too. And the weather was.
Perfect.
Everybody put their feet in the Pacific. We had a little nature trail too that we were able to hike and then you come out on this cliff and the view is unbelievable. Last day, yeah, San Francisco.
San Francisco.
Carl, the fog.
Carl.
We didn't get to see San Francisco, but we did get to see some of the bridge with the fog.
Yeah, we did.
But the kids had a great time. That's a cable that actually holds the bridge up and uh, it's got all kinds of little cables inside of it and the kids thought that was pretty amazing that that's what's holding the bridge up.
It's really neat. And we walked across, um, probably about halfway, um, you know, were able to take some photos. Say we stood on Golden Gate Bridge, which is really.
It was neat.
And then we took our ferry, yeah, to Alcatraz.
You did a lot.
Oh, so.
It was non-stop.
This trip was jam-packed with stuff. It's great.
It was interesting too. The kids felt the aura of the place because they were so quiet in here.
Silent.
It was kind of a creepy place to be in and they would, had headsets on that were telling them all about it and it took you from area to area to see what was going on and they were just not a peep.
That makes a huge impression. Alcatraz is, there's so much to just grasp.
If, if you've never been and you go to San Francisco, you gotta book like almost a year out to get the boat out to Alcatraz, but it's, it's managed by National Park Service and it is one of the best curated historical experiences that you can do in the country. You walk through and you have your headphones on, it's all queued up to go this cell, that cell, and in the background, it's all ambient prison noise. So you walk by an empty cell and they tell you a story and then you hear someone like yell at you or the clang of the, it, it's amazingly done. So I highly recommend it if you've never been before. It's, it's such a cool experience, really, really wonderful. Creepy, but.
I dropped my audio cassette like five times and finally the battery fell, so I don't know why I couldn't hang on to it, but I, I missed some of the tour, but it was really great. And then you have an opportunity to walk through some of the cells, which was really neat, so the kids wanted to do that too. Amazing. And then the last thing we did was Fisherman's Wharf. So we went there for dinner. We had a nice big group dinner at Bubba Gumps.
Bubba Gumps.
It was great. Um, and then the kids had an opportunity to walk around. We took some motorized scooters and zipped around a little bit, so that was really fun. And that's it. We're all, we were all tuckered out at the very end, but yeah, it was a great time.
That's a well-planned trip.
It really was. We, we took advantage of every opportunity to, you know, fill our time with something.
And the kids were just revved to go every minute. They were just right there with us and not a single person said, I'm tired. They just said, what are we doing next?
Yeah.
It's a good balance of everything. Nature, a little history with Alcatraz and then, you know, the boardwalk.
Yep. So, yeah. It was perfect. It was really fun.
We enjoyed it.
Yeah.
Do you have any other science trips planned for the future?
Yeah, um, next year.
Next year we go to Costa Rica.
Yeah, and then we're gonna keep going. So we'll see. We're, we're still, maybe someday we'll, we'll get to Galapagos. That's, that's on our radar, but yeah, we uh, yeah, we wanna be able to take the kids every year if we can to do something somewhere different.
Yeah, we were surprised that we got so many kids that did apply for this trip that's coming up next year.
Yeah, with it being international and it's a younger age group, but they're really excited about it and I think just, you know, the reputation that um, Grand Classroom has built for, for our trips, you know, it's a fun experience for the kids. They come back and everybody feels.
They definitely talk it up.
Yeah.
And we've got kids that are coming again. They're coming with their siblings.
Yeah, yeah, we have kids who are applying to go a third time with us, which is incredible and, and with some of their younger siblings. So yeah, it's, it's such a, such an amazing experience, so.
That's great.
How many kids have signed up so far?
Um, forty-five. Yeah, yeah.
And it's eight, nine, and ten?
Yeah, we opened it up to tenth grade this year. Um, you know, we weren't really sure with it being an international trip if we'd have more of an older age group, but actually the bulk of our students are eighth grade, seventh and eighth, I would say.
Seventh graders now, eighth grade is next year.
Yep.
I mean, even, you know, repeating some of these wonderful experiences, knowing that you'll have kids coming up who won't have, you know, done.
Right, oh yeah. The Grand Canyon trip last year was unbelievable and, you know, of course, we would do that again in a heartbeat and this trip to Yosemite in California was probably.
Crazy.
Yeah.
As kids move through and you've got a fresh group coming in.
Exactly. And it's nice to do the national parks too. I mean, it's not something that was ever, you know, first on my list, but um, Greg had mentioned Grand Canyon to us last year and we said, yeah, let's go for it. And it was, I'm so happy that, that we did that, that we took the kids there, so.
Do you consider Yellowstone?
Yeah, it's tough in April though.
Oh.
Yeah, so we, we tried to go over April break. We would have to plan that for summer, probably, to get up there, but, but yeah, that's definitely, you know, an option for us moving forward in the future, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
Glad the kids had it. Thank you very much. It's nice to see the kids on the, their faces and all the things that you do and uh, the experiences that they get to have. You know, it's just um, the maturity levels, their growth, the experiences and their friendships that they have. It just, it, it really helps develop a, a young person, um, and give them an opportunity to see what else is out there. You know, this is in their own backyard, so to speak. You know, it's not Paris, it's not, you know, Spain, it's, it's the United States.
Oh, yeah. I will say, I won't embarrass any kids and say who specifically, but I will say that we definitely always have like a lot of tears on the way home, like me. Coming home, you know, a lot of kids like, I don't wanna go back to Massachusetts.
Oh, our best driver.
Yeah, I know.
The kids were just over the moon with him.
It's just such a testament to how well, you know, put together the trips are, um, and how well coordinated everything is that they're, they don't feel homesick and they're excited to be, no offense to the parents, but they are excited to be away.
Yeah.
You know, they're having the time of their lives and then they're crying because they, they have to leave.
They have to leave.
That feels really good. Yeah, it's really nice. So, thank you for letting us.
Thank you.
Love it, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope. Delaney, are you speaking on behalf of the, the students? Come on up.
Oh.
Delaney, what are you?
You do everything.
I'm gonna have to put, get another office down with me. Do you want mine?
Yeah.
Delaney Lyons here as a student advisory council, um, to give us an update.
Yeah, um, so it's wrapping up end of the year, so a lot of things we got going. They're already finished. Um, junior prom is done and over with, went well, it was safe and everything like that. Uh, junior classes done with that, but um, we have a yard sale coming up this weekend. I don't know if anybody remembered it from last year. Um, collections were this week and we have one more collection tomorrow. Um, we have like a box truck at the back of the school till three thirty, so you just donate anything you don't want and we're gonna be selling it, so.
What time tomorrow?
Um, after school.
Everybody's watching on TV.
Um, after school to three thirty, I believe, in the.
Ellen and I drove by today.
And um, the box truck. And you just drop anything you don't want in your house anymore that you don't wanna handle, take it tomorrow's last day. What? Yeah. Um, so then we are going to sell it at, on the Common at, from, on Saturday from nine to two AM, so it's a big town yard sale and all the proceeds go to the junior class. Um, what else? Um, the sophomores just had a bake sale today, so that's over. Uh, freshmen, um, they had nothing on the agenda, but we'll get the ball rolling for them soon. It's hard to start off as a freshman. It's hard to start off as a freshman. Let's see what else. So all the clubs basically right now are electing their new presidents, vice presidents, treasurers, et cetera, for the following year. So Key Club, Student Senate, NHS. And then for the music program, the Pops concert is this weekend, Friday and Saturday. 7:00 PM starts for both. It's the only concert that requires a purchase ticket. But it's definitely worth it 'cause you get all the students from like grade three and up, I believe. What, do you know?
Third, fourth, then third and fourth grade.
Third and fourth grade, yeah, I think it's, yeah, grade three and up. I don't think they bring the first and second graders. But, um, so that one's a really good one to go do 'cause you get the variety. I think, don't mind. I took notes during the meeting. Yeah, other than that, everybody's wrapping up their final fundraisers to make sure we all have a good start for next year. Passing everything down from, we're saying goodbye to the seniors. Seniors are passing everything down to us juniors and et cetera. That's about it. We, we've had a good year.
Great.
Thank you, Delaney.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
We have correspondence that we received. One of them is the invitation for senior honors and also awards, senior honors and awards night and also celebration of accomplishment for underclassmen. So those are two that we are asked to speak at. And I was wondering if there was anyone that is interested in speaking and giving the welcome address at the senior honors and awards night and then also the celebration of accomplishment for underclassmen.
Is the senior awards night, that is the 29th, I believe.
Yes.
So May 29th. And then celebration of accomplishment for underclassmen.
Are you interested in that?
You can let us know. Think about it.
I can do the 29th. I won't be able to do the 11th, which will save my own son some of theirs.
I could do the 11th.
Yeah, if no one else can do it, I can do either one, so.
If nobody minds, I would do the 11th. And then we also have the Legends and Legacies of East Bridgewater Bench Dedication. This is sponsored by the Ink and Haley Highs Memorial Scholarship Committee. And it's on Friday, June 21st, 2019. It's honoring Teresa Capicconi and also Susan Silva with E.B. Hope. And it's held at the St. Jim R. Community Center, 355 Fuller Street, East Bridgewater. And that's 5:30 to 7:00 PM. We have to RSVP for these three events to go. We will not be able to sign a primary date for that night.
I'll be there. Represent the schools.
What day of the week is it?
Huh? It's a Friday at 5:00 PM.
I wish I could go. And then we also have pre-town meeting forum, Monday, May 20th at 6:30 PM. Barbara Lee C. is posting that we're all welcome to attend. Normally it's shared, the business conference, we're kind of go, but we're all welcome to go. And Barbara will be posting it in the event. We have more than, you know, the forum there.
Can I ask a question about that? So at an event like this where the, is the budget that the school committee passed earlier this spring open for debate at this event or is this, that's not the forum or, I mean, let me finish my question. I know that the selectmen will make their own recommendations about the budget to be put forth to town. That's, their budget is not decided at that meeting?
No, the certified budget that the school committee has certified will go in the column.
Okay.
FinCom will recommend their budget in the next column. Then the vote will come and it'll say what was the actual vote and then that'll be up on the.
That's not at this meeting?
No, this is really just to go over the warrant.
All the articles, they go, they run down through the articles and they say who's gonna read what article and all that, so it's just like a rehearsal.
And next up, we have superintendent's corner.
Delaney? Yeah, Dr. Williams.
Sure. So under superintendent's corner, tomorrow is our future teacher signing ceremony. So I have programs for each of you. Anyone that is available to attend, we'd love to have you. This was an initiative that was put out through Commissioner Riley's office about a month ago. It went out, hopefully the districts were taking advantage of coordinating it with Teacher Appreciation Week, which is this week. So as sort of a culmination to Teacher Appreciation Week, we are, like oftentimes when students sign on for athletic careers in, in college or military assignments, we are doing a future teacher signing. So we have, we had ten. One has since changed her major in the last two days. So we have nine students who will be graduating in June and attending college in the fall as an education major. So the ceremony tomorrow morning, we have Senator Timblety, State Rep Sullivan, State Rep Dubois, along with local officials, department heads, parents and family members for students to sign their letter of commitment to the field of education. Another piece that we've added to it is they have invited a teacher who has been influential to them in their years of schooling. So every one of them has a teacher that they've invited somewhere between pre-K and, and 12, and so they will be also honoring that teacher as well. I have my third grade teacher attending the event as well. I reached out to her, so I will be honoring her. So tomorrow morning at 9:30, certainly the community is welcome. I think it's a true testament to the work and dedication of, of a teacher and hopefully inspiring more students to go into the field of education.
I think this is great.
Yeah.
It'd be great that it was put together so quickly and efficiently.
It was fast and furious.
It was forward to.
So at least we know next year. I won't be rapping and putting bows on things the hour before school committee.
We always tweet out and Facebook when athletes sign with, with colleges, I'm sure this will be the same press.
Absolutely. We've reached out to the enterprise. So hopefully they'll.
You coming, Josie? All right.
So one of the other features of Teacher Appreciation Week, inspired by the, the wisdom of Erin Fisher, she coordinated efforts with Mr. Savage, Mr. Savage's journalism class and they went around videotaping, "What is your why?" and asking everyone in the district or as many people that wanted to participate to share what is their why for what they do. So that will actually, it was aired for the staff. I think it just went out to the community today. We have it for you this evening to view, but that will conclude our festivities tomorrow, having everyone view that as well. Yes, so, and the second thing I wanted to share with you is you may have seen tweeted out, it originated about five years ago, the principal, Brian McCann, of Joseph Case High School started to tweet out positive messages to his students every Thursday. So it became Positive Sign Thursday. And so when Erin Fisher, because she's everywhere on social media, she learned about this initiative and she brought it to the district as well. So last Thursday was the first Thursday that we did it. And now, this is this Thursday's message. So we're hoping to get a photo of all of you standing with this so that we can tweet it out as well. And you'll look for this every Thursday. There'll be staff members, students, anyone in the school community holding the sign and tweeting out their message. This week's message is from Dr. Seuss. Today is your day. Your mountain is waiting, so get on your way.
And as you can see, we just climbed a few of them.
Literally and figuratively.
You want to try that now? Do you wanna let Karen go and then show that at the end?
Yeah, we can, do you wanna move on and then we can.
Sure.
Show the video at the end.
Now that you're here, Karen, come on up. No, watch it.
We're gonna, like a compliment sandwich, we'll end happy.
Just one thing before, I know that Karen Clifford's coming up and gonna talk to you about the AP scores and AP classes and enrollments and this and that. I just wanted to mention a few things. I, I did meet with, after a lot of the events that we have here at the school, as I said earlier, Dr. Williams and I invite the kids to have lunch with us so we can talk to them. And we usually come back, come out of there, we're so excited, the kids are probably like, "Who are these people?" But they come and sit and talk with us about just an array of, of the events that go on in school and what that they like and what that they don't like and what can I help with. And so I got to talk to, I think there was nine or 10 drama girls in, that came that were in the last production here of The Addams Family. Delaney was in, in there. Riley, who was here tonight, was, and we sat there and we talked and I asked them, "Do you have a voice in East Bridgewater Public Schools?" And they said, "Not really." And I said, "Do you wanna voice in East Bridgewater Public Schools?" And they said, "Yeah." So I asked them, "How could I help via conduit?" And to facilitate getting a voice of our student body to really talk about what they like, what they, they don't like, what they can improve. How can, how can they help us improve what we do here? Whether it's instruction, whether it's helping younger students, whether it's getting together and having lunch and talking about colleges. That was one of their, their things. They think that, that guidance is so busy with so many kids, how can we like have a day where we just sit with our guidance counselor 'cause 25 kids wanna go to Bridgewater State? Can we just sit with one guidance counselor, talk about Bridgewater State? How do we get in? How do we do this? How, you know, so we had these conversations. So next year, we talked about that maybe in August, I'll put together, I'd like to have a superintendent's advisory council made up of students. But we're also gonna have students, I asked them if they would want to be part of interviews of, for teachers and administration going forward. We've had a few on different types of interviews, but I really think that they could come and really give a nice voice and a really good feel to really what the school is about and what they want as students, because that's what we're really here for. And one of them was, I was very impressed with her because very bright, articulate young lady and she asked about, "What do I do and what does Dr. Williams do?" in the meeting. I said, "Well, Dr. Williams says most everything. I just do all the talking." And she said to me, she says, "Well, you know, when you run the first interviews," I said, "Well, Dr. Williams runs the first rounds and then you come to see me and then we go from there." And then I take him to the school committee. So I said, "Would you like to be on interview committee?" She goes, "I would, but I think that Dr. Williams should make up an application to be on the interview committee." Because this isn't about, this isn't, this isn't about being funny and it's not about just an aloof type of coming in and I was on this interview committee. If you wanna be part of the solution and you wanna be part of this, then we should make up a application for students. And I said, "You know, you are right up Dr. Williams alley." I go, "She would love it like that." And why I bring it to you is, is that people at home, our parents, our community needs to know, we have a very bright and articulate student body. From the second grade students that I, I listened to, helped me do a math problem the other day, to watching third grade take the MCAS as I walked through, I had 100% attendance on Wednesday, I believe, as I walked through. To watching kids go through Paris on the day that Notre Dame is engulfed in flames and then come back and say, "Magnificent and I can't believe it," or talking about going up El Capitan or being able to look up and say, you know, "We're 282 feet below sea level." We have an articulate group of students that need to be heard. And what they're telling us is they want more. They wanna dig deeper. They want more. And if the two of us can help facilitate that conversation with our teachers, with our, with other staff, with their parents, with the community, then that's what we're going to do. We feel it's important that these kids have a voice and if I can be a conduit to it, so be it. And I know that Dr. Williams is with me in that, because we go out in the hallways, in 30 seconds, and Tim, you know this with your students, you go out in the hallway for 30 seconds, you, you know everything about somebody and what they did last night, what they're doing tonight and what they're gonna do tomorrow. Or how they hitting the T-ball game last night, or what's going on tomorrow and who's going to, who's presenting at the art show, who's in the baseball game and lacrosse is up the street in Hanover. And, and so we get a lot of that. I think it's important for us to hear a voice. I do, I implore you to think about this. I think we should start talking about having a student on the school committee.
I emailed, I actually emailed Ms. Noyes to find out who the person is who's in charge of the student council, kids or student senate or whatever. So whoever this, it should be, it has to be someone from that group. Yeah, I'm just waiting to hear background.
Right. I'm just saying, I just think it's a good idea to have someone. I mean, it's wonderful to have Delaney come in or other students come in and just talk about the activities. It's another thing to be part of the process, to understand civic responsibility like all of you and to understand that they have a voice. So that if there is a policy, if there is something going on, if they want to talk to you or me or, or Dr. Williams, some of the kids are like, ask, you know, "Can we go see Dr. Williams and why can't we do this in curriculum?" I said, "That's what we do. We need to talk about it." So I implore you to think about it. We are definitely gonna do it next year and I think it's, I think it's important. And I did, Rob, I went in and saw Gracie. I saw her in her class yesterday and she turned around and gave me thumbs up as she was sitting next to her friends and she was working. So from pre-K all the way up, they have a voice. And the voice of, "Everything's going okay" to, "Hey, we need more," so.
You end up students involved at all in the principal selection process?
Yes, yep.
Now by application. Well, and, and it's great timing, you know, with the new social studies frameworks, that there'll be the expectation that every student in eighth grade and before graduation, that they have a civics project. So, you know, being a, a member of a, a board, helping with elections, being part of interview committees, you know, anything that falls under that category would certainly fit the requirements.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping to find out from Ms. Noyes so that way if we can start next September with a student coming from, a permanent member.
Sure. And I invited Mrs. Clifford this evening, who's the, our director of guidance throughout the district, but knows a lot about the high school, obviously. But she's here to talk to us about advanced placement classes, the offerings, and also tell us a little bit about the stats that have come out. Thank you.
Thanks.
Also want some of this, again, the oversight on some of these AP classes comes and how we develop AP classes comes from this information, comes from this data.
So what I put together, the first page is just a snapshot of East Bridgewater, the different AP tests that our students have participated in. You can see a number of exams and an average score. So we did a total of 228 exams last year. And the, I'm sorry, in order for them to get college credit, they have to score a certain level?
Three, four, or five.
Three. Usually it's a four or five. Most, I've talked to Stone Hill, UMass Amherst, Bridgewater State, it's a four or five. So the second page takes that same information and digs it a little bit deeper so that you can see of that total 228 exams, how many students scored in a five, four, three, two, or one category. And then below that, you'll see the subject totals, so you'll see it by subject. I wanna point out that the psychology test that was there, there's one, that the student scored a two, was completely independent. We don't have an AP psychology course. So there's definitely some value to taking an AP course, even though the, the scores might not reflect success.
Do you get credit if you pass the test even if you didn't take the course?
If that student had scored a four or a five, yeah.
Really?
But they took a course online. They didn't just take the test.
I'm just saying hypothetically, instead I think I'll take a psychology course and get a four. The test, yeah.
So the next page takes that same information of the East Bridgewater scores with the. So the next page takes that same information of the East Bridgewater scores with the breakdown The next page is the list of all of the AP courses that East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School, which I think I presented a couple of months ago, but I just put it here again because we're talking about this. That you can see that in 17, 18, we had nine courses. 18, 19, we've increased it to 10. And next year, we'll go up to 11. The AP chemistry was added this year and AP European history will be added next year. And on the bottom, I've itemized that some of our more competitive students have worked independently, either with a faculty member or online, to participate and take AP French, AP Calc BC, AP Computer Science, AP Music Theory, AP Physics Part C, AP Psych. So then the last page is really just to put into perspective as we're growing, I know I talked to Dr. Williams earlier and as we go into the curriculum review cycle for next year, she'll talk more about that, but I, I put an X. So this is the exam schedule that's current right now for one, for weeks, there's two weeks of AP exams. And I put an X next to the AP classes that we do not offer. So how that compares to other local districts, I'm not exactly sure, but this is just the direct, some of the directions that we would have to move in. So there are eight AP offerings in world languages and we offer zero at the AP level. And of the six history ones, we offer two.
In order to get to an AP level, Spanish or French or whatever, they have to be in like a foreign language four or five?
I would say the AP would be five.
Okay, but I don't think we have, we don't have a five for foreign language. Do we have four?
Spanish, four. French, four, yes. And we have had, that's why we've had some students that are competitive, that have taken the French four and then worked independently to take the AP test at the end of the year.
Any idea of how they did?
I'm not sure if it was last year. Yes, last year's the bottom. So we had two students that scored a three, one scored, student scored a two and one student scored a one. So we had four students participate.
So next year, our curriculum review cycle is focused around social studies and world language. So we've started to have those preliminary conversations and in a meeting, we met with Mrs. Sealy, who is the lead for the foreign language department, who was here earlier. And one of the biggest roadblocks we have right now for our students being able to reach those levels of competency at the, the level four, level five, is a lack of having foreign language below grade nine. You know, we're offering it now exploratory, you know, students aren't getting a full year of it. They may get some of it, you know, first half of the year in seventh grade, they might get some of it second half of the year in eighth grade. But in order to prepare our students so that they can be competitive in AP by their, you know, junior, senior year, they really need a better foundation. The other thing the state has started is biliteracy seals that students can have on their diplomas. And it's a test, a competency test that the students would need to take. It could also be offered to our students who are English language learners, certainly, for them to receive that seal. But again, if we want our students to be competitive in attaining those levels of competency, we really need to put a plan in place to be offering foreign language at the lower grades so that students are prepared and, you know, can be competitive in their assessments.
Back it up in eighth grade and do, maybe do the exploratory in seventh grade and back it up in eighth grade.
Right, we would need, yeah, and, you know, her feeling, coming as the, the lead of the department, they need a full year. And, you know, ideally, she thought that if they had two years in seventh and eighth grade, but split like Spanish one over two years so that they can take it in two parts, build a solid foundation and be ready to go into Spanish two or French two as a freshman.
That makes sense.
And as you know, that takes staff, so.
I was just going to say, but what that does is when they build these and when we talk about, when they go to these curriculum cycles, that's where she come down, or that Dr. Williams come down and say, this is what we're going, this is what we'd like to go off. We will be this summer, now that, or this, over the summer, this is what we do. We know that the curriculum cycle is moving forward, we know that we're looking at world languages. We're going to look at a five-year personnel.
Plan.
Plan as we go forward of what we want to do, especially in the science, is science, the STEAM area and the world language area, even, you know, the, the music AP. I mean, we have, we have the structure for it at, right now, and we have the personnel. So, I mean, for that. So, I mean, we could, and we, and we do have a tremendous music department, so.
Quick question. I know this is probably something you could get into for hours, but if you had to bullet in one or two points, I noticed that our scores don't really match up well with the rest of the state. Any thoughts about why?
Well, one of our first initial thoughts is, you know, we've set prerequisites, we need to hold to those prerequisites. You know, as far as, and I don't want to say watering down, you know, certainly students want to try to attain to the highest level possible, but certainly having those prerequisites, we want students to be set up for success. So we need to make sure that if we set those prerequisites, that we stand by those prerequisites and, and we put students in classes, classrooms that they're equipped to handle.
How much overall does teacher training play into all of this? This is a, I would imagine that teaching a college-level course is very different than teaching a high school-level course. What do you do to prepare the teachers to teach this?
So there is a requirement for student, for teachers who teach AP courses to take a, a college board course in the, the content area that they will be teaching. And then offerings that will happen throughout the year for them to then continue with some additional training as well. So it's beyond what we would typically be providing to, to teachers who are teaching academic or honors levels.
But we are doing ongoing throughout the year, so we're not just saying baseline, five years ago, you qualified, so.
Right, no, they'll do refresher courses for them.
Do they get a stipend to teach AP?
No, we pay for the court, we pay for the.
Yeah, the, the district will fund the, the training, but it's not an additional stipend to teach it.
As far as the curriculum of CP honors and AP, is there ever an ongoing review as far as the content being covered, the integrity of the class, how these, you know, how CP honors and AP kind of vet out against each other? Does that make sense? Am I asking that question in the right way?
Yes, so as, I mean, what the curriculum review cycle has given us the opportunity to do is to take each content area one year at a time. And certainly what we're finding, though, as we work with one content area and we need to move on to the next content area, we still have that previous content area, you know, wanting to expand upon what they have. So a couple of different things that districts are, are looking into, a few of them are actually exploring, is not having leveled classes, but having students come out of the class at a certain level depending on what they put into that course. So more heterogeneous groupings within a classroom, but based on the level to which students are working at and expanding upon the assignments, because the standards are the same regardless of whether it's a college prep course or an AP course. But certainly the pace and the rigor and the extension that goes on and the expectations in those higher level courses are different, but the standards are the same. So what districts, you know, are, some, not all, are contemplating is, you know, having the student push themselves to the potential and to the level that they want to aspire to, as opposed to being in a classroom, and this is one of the things that we talked about, AP courses are weighted differently. So, you know, there is a mindset among teenagers that I could be in an AP course and getting a C and that's weighted to the equivalence of being in a CP class and having to work to an A. So we, you know, we want to dispel that stigma of just go in the highest level and maybe not perform as well because then the weight, you know, equals out.
And that follows into the prerequisite piece to some extent, but also, I think from what I've understood and heard and feedback is, you know, to place for an AP, you obviously have to maintain a certain level of grade, but there's also teacher recommendation and then the student potentially has the opportunity to appeal if they're not put in that class. But from what I understand, that may have kind of created an imbalance in numbers in some of the AP classes.
Right. And so that speaks to the prerequisite that, you know, an appeal can still happen, but it has to be close within, you know, if it's an 85 average that you need in order to maintain in that level, then we're talking maybe one or two points difference. In order for students to be able to move from one level, level to the next, they need a 90 or better. And we've definitely seen that that has disintegrated a little bit. So we need to make sure that we get back to that prerequisite and that everybody's holding strong on that.
So that's going to be in place for this next course selection?
Yes.
Okay.
I think people need to realize that there's an accountability system. And it doesn't mean you're a bad person if you take CP. And parents need to understand that. That we can appeal and kick and holler and scream, but if the student is not ready, and just because we believe that AP is better than CP, does not mean that the student belongs in there. You're setting them up for failure. But what it also does is it, it pushes a teacher, and I strongly believe this, and the teacher begins to feel, oh, boy, he's not going to make it. And this is when our grading starts to, starts to move. When we take, if you want to take these courses serious, then you have to have a serious attitude in them. If you're going to take them, it comes summer work. It takes the time, the effort to dig deep, and that's it. If you're not ready to do it, then you're not ready to do it. And that's okay. That doesn't make you a lesser student, lesser athlete, lesser person. We have, you know, we need to look at how we grade from course to course and teacher to teacher. We need rate of reliability. That'll be the next thing that we're going to start looking on, on instruction. You know, what is an A in your class is an A in my class? That needs, that's, that, that's how administrators hold teachers accountable. What does it look like in my class? What happens is when you, we put a student that isn't ready into a class, it compromises the entire integrity of the class when it comes to grading, the instruction, and the other students. That's, somebody has to say it, I will say it, there's an accountability piece. If a class should only be a 10 because the 11th, 12th, 13th, and 14th and 15th student didn't make the criteria, then the class size stays at 10. We have a class of 41. I have heard it since, Karen, how long have we been hearing? We've had a class of 41. We know, we know. Well, somebody needed to hold the line and it wasn't held. So now we've got 41 kids in a literature class, English class. It's too many. How can, how can an English teacher go home and read 41 essays and get them back in a timely fashion, graded, and make sure that it's a reliable grading? How do you keep your eyes open? How do you, how do you, how do you rate between each, each person's essay? It's too much? We need to hold the line. And if we're going to be held at the standard that, that our counterparts, West Bridgewater, Abington, Abington Blue Ribbon School up the street, what do their APs look like? Are they just as high as, I don't know. But that's something I think is the next step that we'll be looking at.
Yeah, and we need to be clear about the fact that college prep classes are grade level classes. And I think every time you have levels, people just automatically assume that the, you know, the lowest level, it's still grade level. And it may be semantics, you know, whether we again look at, you know, is it just called English nine? And then we have English nine honors, English nine AP. Because how college prep became in people's eyes as lower level English, it's the frameworks, it's the same exact frameworks and everyone's held accountable for them. So we need to dispel that stigma on college prep courses.
College prep used to be.
Karen, you've called.
We have college prep because that's what the NCAA recognizes, that's what colleges want to see, they want to know that your first level is that grade level class.
Karen, you, you've talked to a lot of colleges. Tell us a little bit about that. Some, they don't even recognize, some colleges are not even, are not, it's not, if I get a five in calculus, does that mean that the college recognizes that as the college course?
Yes.
Okay.
So typically, the colleges that I have spoken to, UMass Amherst, Stonehill, Bridgewater, all will recognize a four or five in that particular content if that's the student's major. So if I get a five in, in AP Lit, but I'm not going to become an English major, that may count just for one of my electives. So it's, it does offset a little bit. To report to the colleges, it's a student's responsibility to submit those AP scores. So if they get a three or a two, they're never submitting it, so the college is not ever looking at it, but the college is giving them that weight on their transcript. Most colleges will reconfigure a GPA, so they will wait the AP class also.
Because I, I think there's a mystique that, oh, if I, if I take all these AP courses, I'm going for free and I'm, and you, you, you have CP, I have AP, we both applied to Stonehill, I'm going before you.
I feel like that, that what has happened is that it has gone the way of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, which used to be that full scholarship to go to a state school, now is a very small slice that just covers tuition, which the tuition at UMass Amherst, although the full ticket price is, can be $24,000, the tuition is $900 a year because the rest is fees. So that's how they get around that, that they still call it a scholarship? And I think that's kind of what has happened with AP. There was a grant not too long ago that students were encouraged to take AP without any prerequisites. The school of thought being that it gave the student an opportunity to, to reach, to see, to start to recognize what they were going to have to increase. That flooded the gates. So many people are taking APs, it sort of reduced the scores overall, which is why most schools are going back to a stricter prerequisite to get into those classes. So that's, that's just kind of.
I think that's one of the data findings that we, that we found over the last two years. And then this year really took in, taking that really hard look at them.
Because what do you want to see? Do you want to see more kids going into AP classes or do you want to see more kids getting stronger scores? And if more kids are taking AP classes, are they preparing themselves for college more even if they're not getting the college credit? So there's, there's just the, the different schools of thought.
But are we pressuring it, but are we pressuring the instructional leader of the classroom?
Right.
To, to do 41 AP kids or even 30?
And is the student getting as much out of the class, given the pace that it's at, versus if they were properly placed in their honors class or their college prep class?
Exactly. And that's where you get into the assessment and instruction.
And no one likes to talk about AP in this sense, but if we don't, I think the PDs, the, Dr. Williams, so they're, if we don't continue to peel back layers, we're never going to get to the root of this problem. And maybe one of them is we allow, like the floodgates opened, we didn't use any prerequisites, we let everybody in. So then all of a sudden, we put prerequisites back in and then, and then parents got upset with us, so we opened the doors back up and then we let people, then we let students in. I don't want students to feel as if they can't handle the AP course and then, and then to get swallowed up and not want to continue on. Or get test anxiety, or become angst in high school, or get, have any social emotional issues as we move forward. That's not what we're here for. We get better over time and we all know that. And the supports that we're going to put in and the interventions that we'll have in place will be here. Because we have AP students who will excel. We have CP students that will excel. And we have students with IEPs that are probably, that probably were students here, have an IEP and not. that probably were students here, have an IEP, and now are a teacher here. And people need to remember, doesn't matter where you come from, matters how you get there, and how, what, you make the best out of it. So I really, AP is one part of this school. It's not all parts. We have, we have 1,000 students at the high school, and we've got 600 and so at the Mitchell and Central Schools. We need to look at all students, not just, not just one group. And not just keep pushing kids up because they gotta have an AP because I don't want him to be looked at as, oh, CP.
Well, and like we talked about, you know, every student has their strengths, so they may have a math strength. That doesn't necessarily mean that if they're in an AP math course, that they should automatically feel like they need to be in an AP English course, and an AP Science course, and an AP Social Studies course.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for coming and.
You're welcome.
Sharing that information with us.
Thanks, Karen.
Next up, we have included in our packet the Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, which talks about executive session and the 10 reasons why we could have an executive session. And then there's little sub, sub-reasons under each individual reason.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure everybody had that. That's it, that's all I'd say about that.
So what's the, is the process for executive session that the chair decides we're going to have it, or can a committee member request it for an upcoming meeting, or how does that work?
A committee member could request it, but it depends on what, why it's being requested, and if, if, logistically, it could be planned, because, well, this, like, an open meeting, an executive session has to be posted 48 hours in advance, and it doesn't, doesn't count weekends or holidays, and.
You can't just go into executive session.
Right.
Negotiations.
My concern, Dr. Legault, is that I did request an executive session several weeks ago for a reason that is outlined here, that we can meet. It was told that we couldn't. So the only reason I'm asking is if that's, what is the process? If one member wanted the committee to meet, does it then happen, provided it fits under these parameters?
But sometimes you have to let, you have to let, like, logistically, you have to let things play out, or you have to, if there's investigation, or if there's something going on that needs to happen, you have to let things happen before.
I know he asked for one.
I mean, I can't go into personnel things, so.
Okay.
Next up, I have Day on the Hill. That was last Wednesday that Trista and I went to Day on the Hill. Trista took notes while she was there, I took notes.
No, you took pictures.
Well, I scribbled some notes.
I took notes for you.
Afterwards, after the fact. But I just wanted to say, we did, Trista and I got to meet with all of our state legislators. We met with Senator Brady, Senators Timmeltie and Brady, and State Rep Dubois and Sullivan. And we also found, while we were meeting with Representative Dubois, she happened to let us know that in the beginning of the year, it wasn't anticipated, it was anticipated that the budget, that we wouldn't have as much tax revenue or whatever, and people held on to their, they didn't file their taxes until later. And so when the tax revenue came back, it was better than expected. And she told us that there would be no 9C cuts, which is a good thing, because that happens when there's a deficiency of revenue. And so while we were there, we just, we advocated for additional funding by supporting the increase in Chapter 70 and changing the funding formula. We also discussed some of the unfunded mandates and tried to ask for them to be either funded or maybe unmandated or whatever. And then we also discussed the Medicaid reimbursement, coming back to the schools instead of going back to the general fund. Trista?
Well, it was, before we met individually with our legislators, we had the, the meeting. And what MAS, MAS provided was a packet of talking points. Some of them were applicable to us as a district, some of them were not. But basically, we were able to take some of these and hand them individually to each of our legislators, so they could see, you know, rather than take notes or be distracted by conversation, they had these to reference, Chapter 70, Circuit Breaker, the Medicare reimbursement, et cetera. So it was helpful to be able to just give them that. But I will say for me, obviously, this was the first time there, but one of the things that we took away at the very end was when the state auditor talked about transportation costs for the districts and DCF. She made, she has been doing an audit, and this was kind of her culmination and results of the audit. There are 6,800 kids in Massachusetts in foster care. More than 45% of those kids require an IEP. So you think of those numbers, right? And as far as the reimbursement, what's supposed to happen with reimbursement for these kids that need transportation in and out of the district, DCF is actually supposed to be returning that to the school districts, which they're not. But the second piece of that is throughout, within her audit, she discovered that there is a law that federally, at the federal level reimburses DCF 50% of these transportation costs. So in turn, DCF is supposed to not only pay back the school district for the transportation costs, but they are eligible for a 50% federal reimbursement, which according to her, DCF has not been submitting for this reimbursement, which would likely explain why they're not, you know, paying the school districts, even though on both levels, it's, it's required. So apparently, there's conversations with DCF to start submitting for that reimbursement. I don't know how that's going to affect, you know, the schools getting their transportation costs back. But it was, it was very interesting to hear the state auditor's report.
Was there any talk of that happening retroactively, or was it simply going forward?
No, she didn't, she didn't mention that, and I can't imagine that it would.
That's a good try.
Yeah.
And I mean, even, you know, beyond the reimbursement, I would love to have it be a cost share right from the start, so that we're not, you know, chasing after reimbursement.
Exactly, because we have to pay, and then we have to, you know, track them down. And there are districts who get nothing back. I mean, I don't know what our true reimbursement is, but nothing back from DCF. So that, that was interesting, but again, it was nice to meet face to face with all four of our legislators and, and kind of share our needs for funding, but also our reasons. I, you know, we made the point to say that we, as a district, do really well with the resources we have, but we need to continue to support our kids, you know, and the only way we can do that is with more funding, which will give us more resources, so.
When we went, when we met with Senator Timmeltie with those cards, because we made sure we got extra cards to give to all of them, he said, out of all, that he met with other people from all his towns, he said, like, 10 towns or whatever, we were the only school committee members that gave him those cards, and he was glad. And he also said that he was glad that we made appointments, because some people were showing up and he didn't have time to talk to them, but we had appointments scheduled.
Your honor, swivel.
Yeah, it was good. I'm glad we.
And I will say, just as a note of somewhat awe, the lunch was provided by, it was more than 13, I think it was 21 local regional schools, VOTEC schools, in the Hall of Flags. And I have to tell you, I might have gotten three plates of food. It was so fabulously presented, it, it was amazing, and the kids that were there were interacting as they were showcasing, you know, whether it was a dessert or a meal. It was, it was just a great experience all around.
It was restaurant quality food.
Absolutely.
They've upped their game. They didn't have that when we went a few years.
It was delicious. You should have seen the desserts.
Did you find these?
I did see them. You took some home in your pocketbook.
Pass the card over. Would you mind if I?
Next year, I'm hoping that they, I'm hoping that they do it all at the State House.
Do what?
Poor Ellen.
All right, Ellen, everybody's getting giddy. Here we go.
Thank you for going with me up there, Trista. It was enjoyable.
Yes.
And I felt good, I felt we got, maybe we got some things accomplished. Oh, and, well, I haven't heard back from, because, so we, we asked about Central School driveway and to have that reconfigured, so that way it's more than a single lane.
Fire line.
Yeah, so we brought it to.
Brady and Timmeltie.
Yeah, but we, we talked about it with Michelle Dubois, and she said that they had already turned in their budget for the House. And so when we spoke to Timmeltie and Brady about it, Timmeltie said that him, he and Senator Brady would file jointly.
Well, they're all going to be here tomorrow, so I'm going to make sure that I get right up and, right up with them.
Because we gave them the actual proposal. We made copies and gave them.
Yeah, I sent it to them. I emailed it to their office, yeah.
That'll be awesome. And next up, we have, I would take a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from April 25, 2019.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Gordon, second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
And I would take a motion to approve accounts payable warrants, 46D, dated May 8, 2019.
So moved?
Moved by Gordon, second. Second by Trista, all in favor?
Aye.
And, actually.
I have a question.
Abstained, okay, I don't, do I have to abstain from, that's only one of them. Okay, so I have to abstain from 46D. Action, I would take a motion to approve payroll warrant 45PS dated May 1, 2019.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Gordon, second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
And I would take a motion to approve, to, let's see, identify George T. Wilkinson's Inc., general contractor bid as the lowest responsible and eligible bidder, and is therefore awarded the contract for the MSBA project, number 201700830005, Central Elementary School Boiler Replacement Project, for the contract price of $759,619.
No moves. Second.
Moved by Rob, second by Tim.
Can we, can we discuss that?
Sure.
For a second. Liz, I'm not an expert on the procurement process, but are we obligated to take the lowest bid?
No, but going through it, the OPM that is working with us, the bids came in, he knows this company, they came in with the best bid, and he knows the company that's coming in.
Lowest responsible bid.
Yeah, yes.
So he, God knows, I know, lowest bid isn't always the best.
No, it's not, but.
From his perspective, this was an acceptable bid, and we can go.
Yes.
This is a good victory for the town, that.
Yes.
So we got to make sure that gets out there, that people know, because it was a big deal when we voted for it.
Right.
Significantly below.
And you'll see it, you'll see it at the town meeting.
Good.
See it on the warrant.
Great.
And, oh, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I would take a motion after discussion, well, I'll say, I'll ask for the motion in a second, and then we can discuss. So I would take a motion to approve the change in the day that the school committee meetings are held from every second and fourth Thursday to every second and fourth Tuesday for the FY 2020 school year. And a draft of the meeting dates are included in this packet. And so discussion?
So.
Oh, actually, I take a motion in a second.
Do we move? Okay. I'll make the motion.
Motion by Gordon.
Second.
Second by Rob, discussion.
I think when we brought up the last meeting, Liz, you were going to look ahead at the next year's schedule to see if there were enough conflicts that this would be better?
I gave it to you.
Yes.
Yeah, but, yeah, no, I have both. I think we were going to look and see.
The conflicts are still on the Thursdays.
All Thursdays.
You got band concerts, Christmas concerts, the.
Parent-teacher.
Parent-teacher conferences. Most everything happens at the end of the week.
Okay.
So I just want to be able to attend some of them, and I think that you should be attending some of them, so.
And I know last time Teresa said she'd make it work for her schedule. Anyone else have any objections to going to Tuesdays?
After extensive discussions with the commanding general of the McLaughlin House, cleared to go.
I would make only one request, is that if we do go to Tuesdays, to keep the very first August meeting on that Thursday, for 8:22 instead of 8:20.
Sure.
Okay.
I don't want to cut the summer any shorter than I need to.
So, so that'll be, that's the only change, is go 22. Okay.
I didn't hear you. I was getting yelled at by the general of our office. You're going to have to, you're going to have to get your.
I'm going to have to spin on Thursdays now.
You're going to have to move your group.
Keeping the first August meeting on a Thursday.
Yes, I just looked at Joanne, I saw her put it down, so she'll let me know.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I would take, unless there's any further discussion, I would take a, we did the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
So we're now officially on Tuesdays, except for the August, August 22 meeting is on Thursday. And I would take a motion by, let's see, to approve the East Bridgewater Music Parents' Association's request to sell the old marching band uniforms for $40 each as a fundraiser to support a new scholarship program that was started this year. So we, as a school committee, because that's.
I know, who's going to buy? I don't know.
Someone who wore them years ago?
I would say that, yeah, something like that. I bet you Ray would, he probably knows that these are going to sell someplace.
Middle school band somewhere that needs.
Yeah, that, or, you know.
Nostalgia.
And we, we, as a school committee, because it's school property, we have to vote to allow someone to do that, do it to someone to sell. So I would take a motion.
So moved?
Moved by Gordon to approve.
Second.
Second by Tim, all in favor?
I'm sorry, we just, just a point of discussion is that, could we make the request of the music parents to report back to us how many they sold? And did the money go to the scholar, you know, how much money went to the scholarship? I think that only makes sense to close that loop, okay?
I'll let Ray Ponti know tomorrow.
Don't tell him I asked that.
Oh, I'm gonna, he's watching it at home, because he knows he was up on an.
Sorry, Ray. I take that back.
Yes, thank you. I would take a motion to approve the request of George McCabe, former school committee member, to present his granddaughter, Megan Yelfe, with her diploma at the graduation ceremony on June 2, 2019.
So moved?
Moved by Trista.
Second.
Second by Gordon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next up, we have, we need to have discussion about this, so I'll make the motion first, and then we can second and discuss. So I move that we only allow former school committee members, in addition to present school committee members, to present a family member with their diploma at graduation. So I need a motion, or I moved it, actually, I did that myself. So I moved it, and second?
I'll second it.
Gordon seconded it, and discussion.
Can we just ask Liz her thoughts about, what if a teacher has a child or whatever? How, how do you want to handle that?
You know, that came up today about having staff. But how far do you go? I mean, that's, I guess that's the.
Also, we, we talked about this last year, I don't mean to, but we talked about this last year, where there's something special about being, receiving that diploma from the accredited university, university high school, the principal, there's some, there's some meaning behind that. And I think that's what you're getting to, is that we can't diminish it just by having that someone has a relationship, therefore, they can hand off the diploma, because there is a lot. Is that a past practice, or are there a lot of requests for it?
It is, it's past, it is past practice.
It's, I think it's a past practice. I mean, the school committee, obviously, you know, we certify, I certify them that they've, that they've received the credits, that they can receive their diploma. Authority is granted on you to hand out the diplomas.
It's kind of crazy on.
But I think what happens is, is if we keep going down, it's, I don't know, I mean, it takes, I think it takes away, I think that being a former school committee member, a school committee member, I think that should, I mean, that person was here, their granddaughter or daughter or was going through, I think that has relevance, because they did do civic responsibility, they were here, they, they understand what has to happen. I thought about teachers, and I thought about staff. I mean, that's up to you. I mean, they are here, they know what it takes to have a child go through, that's up to you, but I think if we start saying, well, a teacher can do it, then. That's up to you. But I think if we start saying, well, a teacher can do it, then any staff member can do it.
Then you're potentially going to get, well, I'm a teacher in a different district, or I was a teacher here.
Or you're potentially going to get, is it, should it only be professional staff? Or, I shouldn't say professional staff. I strike that. Certified. For academia. You really, and then you really, you're just pulling its strings.
So if we, if we pass this today, it certainly will apply to next year's graduation. What about this year's graduation?
Well, it would, I would say, I don't know. I guess it's up to you guys. We could do-
Well, we only had one request.
We did.
There's been only one written request, and that is from George McCabe. And there's only been one written request to the superintendent's office. I haven't gotten a second one.
And he's a former school committee member.
He is a former school committee member. It's still, I mean, I still think I'm going to follow the policy that you had before, that the written request has to come through the superintendent's office. I bring it here, and I ask you. You can have the right to accept or deny. I mean, that's another thing. You, if you put this in a policy, it's going to be rigid, which-
And there is, so I, I don't-
Is there?
Full disclosure is I received a second request, and-
In writing?
As an email. So I guess I can consider that writing.
Then it should come up as correspondence in the next meeting, Ellen, and bring it, bring it forward.
Just, not to nitpick, but I can imagine a scenario. Should this be amended to say that former East Bridgewater school committee members?
Well, that's what my point was getting at. A teacher, right? Could be a teacher who taught here and now is in a different district. So I think it should-
I think we've only had people who are currently working in the district.
No, I'm just seeing, to Tim's point, interpretation of people can be very literal.
I can see it happening.
Yes.
There is no policy.
Okay.
Set policy of your school, of our school committee. I don't think it needs, I don't know if we want to put it into full policy. I think it needs to be more of a, I don't know, amendment or being- The school committee has the right to accept or deny anybody asking.
But create a recommended set of guidelines.
But a recommended set of guidelines, because I think, I agree, you know. Struggling over this, I think that if someone comes in and says, well, you know.
Unless we leave it up to the superintendent's office to make the determination.
Is basically what is happening, he's coming to you for permission. And that's how it has always been historically. I gave diplomas to two of my children. I completely understand the superintendent's point on this, that-
It needs to be reined in a little bit, because some years, it has been crazy.
I think this makes a lot of sense. I would just ask that we amend it to write this to the school committee, because I can totally see someone, a grandparent, having been saying, I was on the school committee for five years. Can I give my grandson?
Right.
Right. And even the relation, because we've had people give it to nieces, nephews.
Oh. I think that, you know, like the caveat, like Rob said, maybe put some- Yeah.
A general guiding principle.
Right.
I think, to me, the most important point is that we set something up so that, even though it might not be a popular move, but the idea is that we would be consistent. So I'd hate to think that one year, we, well, you made the okay that, you know, this guy, because he was seven feet tall, he got to hand his kid the diploma, whatever it may be. And then the next year, well, no, I'm tall. Why didn't I get to give it? Whatever it is. So I just think it's, I would like to think that we're as fair as possible, even though we might set it forth, and people might say, that's not, that's not right. You say, well, we're going to be consistent. I think, I think that, I'd like to be consistent, or at least attempt to be. Certainly my tenure here, and then going forward, whoever, but.
I also like the idea of not necessarily putting it into policy this year. Takes burden off, and goes back to the showcase to a group of people. A, section B, where if we spread it around a little bit, responsibility around a little bit, then, you know, there's that accountability of all of them, that recommended set of guidelines.
I think people, who sometimes will come in and talk to me and say, I'd like to do this, and I can steer them. Because when they put it into writing, anything that comes into the writing to the superintendent's office has to go to correspondence to the school committee. It is a request for, for anything. You know, if it's just me to just take care of within the buildings, or talking to the principals, or talking to a teacher, that's one thing. But any type of writing that comes in, or any type of correspondence, my obligation is to the school committee of East Bridgewater Public Schools. Something comes in, I've got to bring it to you.
Would you feel comfortable bringing it in with, say, a recommendation?
Sure.
You know, within these guidelines, but maybe there is a special set of circumstances.
And if-
Plan it, and then we can evaluate.
Sure.
I'm sorry, perhaps there's a workaround as well, too. Maybe they don't give it to them on that stage, but maybe it's some other smaller, you know, event or something that they could give it to them. But I don't know what's possible or not, but.
I, can I just, I worry that we're kind of overthinking this a little too much. I think it's a fairly, it's a standard thing, I can tell you. I was lucky enough to get my grandmother to give me my diploma in high school. Meant the world to me, but she served in the school committee for 25 years. She earned the right to give me that diploma. And I think, I understand what we're getting at with this. And I think it's admirable. I think it removes, you know, being accused of being arbitrary and establishes some parameters for-
So the individual who made the request to me about giving their daughter their diploma is not-
Right. So how do you weigh one against the other right now?
Case in point, right? Different school committee, different district.
Right.
But still a teacher, still a professional, certified professional.
So we'll-
Can we act on this by adding that language, or do we have to put it on it?
Oh, we can amend it.
You can also table it to the next meeting, so we have a little time to put some things down and come back with it. That's just to give you that option.
Congratulations, coming up shortly. We have time to act on this.
You have one more? That's, but-
I assume if they want to give their diploma, then they're going to go to the graduation.
That correspondence has to, that correspondence, though, has to go to the entire board, and it has not. So she's going to, so she-
Oh, I will bring it at the next-
You have to, I would table this, bring it to the next meeting, and that correspondence has to come forward.
Okay.
I think that that sounds like a force of action.
Yeah. It's the most ethical.
I think that's where we're going to go. Okay.
So you want to table that, table this action item to the next meeting, and-
Yes, I think so. Okay.
And so we'll table that, bring it back to the May 23 meeting. Next up, we have a request of Ms. Tara Noe, Assistant Principal, to approve Ray Ponti's request to take an out-of-state trip with the high school band chorus students to Canterbury Lake, Arkansas, in New Hampshire, after they perform at the Great Musical Festival in Lexington, Mass. On Friday, May 31, 2019. And before anybody says approve it. So this, they do every single year. I don't know if you're aware, but do it every year.
Moved.
Moved by Trista.
Second.
Second by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
And before we adjourn, I would like to take a moment of silence. I meant to do it at the beginning of the meeting, and I sidetracked. So I would like to take a moment of silence for Loretta Ring, who passed away recently. She finished her career, she's been in education for a total of 33 years. She finished her career as a counselor at Avon High School and East Bridgewater High School. And that, it was for a total of 33 years as an educator. And while she was employed at the Intermediate School in East Bridgewater, she initiated the Science Club and the Science Fair. And after retiring, she served 12 years on the school committee, also nine years on the Conservation Commission. And she represented the town on the North River Collaborative for Special Education. And she was chairman for nine years in the Early Childhood Advisory Committee. This time, I'd like to take a moment of silence for Loretta Ring. Thank you. And at this time, as long as nobody has anything else, I would take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Tim. Second by Gordon. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So before, it's not Thursday anymore, I need to-
I actually love to take a photo.